Councilman Ron.
Here.
Mayor Carter Mills.
Here.
Mayor Meyer. Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Great, thank you. We have public comment, any members of the public that would like to comment on our closed session item? Would do so now, do we have anyone here?
Madam Mayor, there are no registered public comments.
None online or some little, you know, how we have all these?
None on teleconference either.
Alright, awesome, great, we will recess to closed session.
I'd like to request a letter of support from the City Council for that grant. Thank you.
Alright, thank you Susan. Next we have Pat Gregory, followed by Eddie George.
Good evening Council, Mayor. The reason I'm speaking to you this evening is about the proposal for change in accounting firms. I was, I've been a critic of the PUN group for years, so I was very happy to see that the city is rotating towards a new accounting firm, which I think is a positive thing. And so I strongly support the proposal that the city has brought because I took a look at, did a little research, and they seem to be just the type of firms that our city needs. I'd also like to comment on the comprehensive audit, because that's also being proposed, and it just seems to me that it would be a good idea to have this Van Lant firm also do the comprehensive audit. The reason is, is that by doing that, they will get a good background as to what's really happening in the city, and they'll be able to dig into it as they do their comprehensive audit, so it will prepare them for the next three years. They're also like $750,000 cheaper, so that's another good reason. So I just wanted to voice my support for the city, what it's doing in rotating towards a new accounting firm, and I strongly suggest that they go ahead with Van Lant for the comprehensive audit also. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Eddie George, followed by Michael Wolford.
I just want to say a little bit about Joe Males, you know, everybody in our city has been complaining about wanting change, wanting change, and when we get change, what happens? They don't want to change. And, you know, I just want to give a shout out to everybody who's wondering, you know, who is the action group out here? And, you know, Howard Rosenthal, Eric Gosh, Kenneth Graff, which I want to really ask Kenneth, you know, what are you thinking? I mean, you've got more money and you've got brains, because you want to spend all of this money to be able to falsify people's character and try to keep somebody out of the City Council that's really going to stand for the people and not the pockets? You know, Joe Males has done a lot for this community, I don't know if you guys and gals believe that or not, so, you know, this is what I thought. We had this from Carter Meyer, we had the same incident with Stacy Olson, anybody we have that come into the City Council that's going to stand for you, the people, they don't want it. Why? Because they're not the honest ones. If you guys want honest people in the City Council, folks, let's keep Joe Males in, let's join Joe Males in the family 57, Joe's friends 57, so, keep Joe Males in here, let's keep the people that count for the people, not for the pockets. That's all I got to say. Any minute is remaining, give it to the next person.
Mike Wolford, followed by Robert Garza Jr.
I just wrote a little something, because I didn't want to ramble, but I might ramble. Good evening, distinguished mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Michael Wolford, and I live in the city of Hemet. I have a business, Empire Mobility, in the city of Hemet. I'm a member of the American Legion Post 53 in the city of Hemet. I sit on the board of Clover Lane Foundation, Maneuvering Veterans Forward, and Veterans Mobility Projects, who have offices in the city of Hemet. I am on the board of the San Jacinto Lions Club, the San Jacinto Chamber of Commerce, and among other organizations that are of service to our citizens, our veterans, our disabled children, and my point is that I care about this city, this valley, and its people. I'm asking for something very reasonable, please do what's right for the city, vote to keep Joe Males in that seat. Joe Males won by a two to one margin. If we have a special election, it will cost the city $100,000 or more, from what I understand, and I believe Joe Males will win again, so what's the point? Our veterans, our elderly, and everyone that cares about this valley, and everyone that I can rally will campaign to get Joe reelected. Joe Males is good for the city, please build an interim seat available with Joe Males, so we don't have to have a city election. This is the people's choice by a landslide vote, the people have spoken with their ballots, their ballots, please vote to support what the people want. Mike Madrid's campaign backers are people like Kenneth Graff, Eric Gosh, Josella Gosh, Kevin Ferencope, Edward Formica, Formica, whatever, Lori Van Arsdale, Barney Wright, Howard Rosenthal, just to name a few. These people make up a special interest group that does not represent the will of the people, should not dictate the way the city is run. We will get it done, we will get it done right sooner or later, there's another election coming up in 22, 2022, and again, the people will have a voice, so please do the right thing and get it right, get Joe Males back where the people voted to have him, on this council. God bless this city, the valley, and its people.
Next we have Robert Garza Jr., and then Roy Taraza.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you guys for doing an awesome job when you guys stepped into this office, into the position that God appointed you guys to. You guys are in my prayers, and, and I just ask a favor for you guys, because I know you guys have a lot on your plate, even with home, but I'm here to just encourage the people that I've seen a lot, what Joe has done, not just as a council member, but as a coach, you know, for Valley Wide, at one time, Valley Wide didn't have a coach, and their softball team was gonna not exist, but Joe stepped in that place as a coach, as a head coach, and got that team to go. And that's what he's doing here for the city of Hemet, as a team leader, as a manager for this city, he's done a lot, just as well as his comrades here, who sit next to him, even to the right and to the left, and that's what the city needs, to move forward with new ideas, to move the city forward for the future. And I just ask everybody for Joe Males, because he's an awesome man, and he did a lot for the military, there at the Legion, not just at the Legion, but also at the help lodge, and this man keeps on striving. When everybody sees negative, he brings the positive out of that negative, and you can see the results, why the city being cleaned up this last few weeks ago, and I thank you, Joe, for cleaning up the city. Thank you guys.
Next we have Roy Taraza, followed by Joseph Rhodes.
My name is Roy Taraza, and I'm here to support Joe, and as long as I heard, met Joe, he's done a lot for the community here, and he has a heart for the valley here, so I recommend Joe to stay in his position where he's at, because he has a heart for the valley to clean things up and make things happen here, that's where his heart's at. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Joseph Rhodes, followed by Jesse Karan.
Hey, Joseph, and, you know, you guys have been doing a great job. Love you guys, have come out, you guys have joined us in our adoptive bar, cleaning up our city, you know, you guys probably don't know me, Russ, you don't know me, and I don't forget your name, but you don't know me, alright? But the rest of these guys, they know me. Alright, my name's Joseph Rhodes, I take it to the streets, we're getting drug addicts off the streets, Joe's helping us, you know? In our church, we teach boxing, young kids, keep them off the streets, Joe's trying to help us out with that, you know? You guys are doing a great job. Plus, once you look at that man that's sitting next to you, and I implore you to make certain that your goal is to keep him right in that place, it's a good thing. You guys had enough going on without bickering, or trying to get somebody else to work in, but people are saying, 57%, we employ you to do the right thing. Alright? Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Next we have Jesse Karan, followed by Richard Galindo.
Good evening, my name is Jesse Karan, I'm the senior pastor at Living Way, just up the street from here. You know, I met Joe several years ago, probably five, six years ago, and I don't remember how it was, but what kept us talking, what kept, what brought us together as friends was his love and compassion for people. You know, Joe has been involved, you know, with the veterans, Joe, since he's become City Council, he's connected with us in our outreach, is when whatever it is that we're doing, Joe wants to know, and he's there to support us. You know, he has a heart for people, he has a heart, you know, we come from a similar background, where it wasn't very nice for some of us as kids growing up, and we needed some structure, we needed some discipline, we needed some types of programs to get us off the streets. Here I am now, in this city, almost 16 years old, this is where the Lord brought me, and I run into this man that just has a heart for this community, he has a heart for the people, for the kids, and a desire to see change, and I can say, not just because he's a friend, because before he was a councilman, he was a friend, and you know what? I've seen his heart, he stepped alongside of us, he's asking, what are we doing, how are we doing it, how can we help? He wants to be involved, our church is an outreach ministry, we're in the streets, we're in the hood, we're with the homeless, we're in the dumpsters, wherever we need to be, and you know what? I've watched this man roll up his sleeves and come and serve right alongside of us. He's not just talking the talk, he's walking the walk, and so I want to just support him and ask the community to stand behind him, because this is the guy we need in office. Thank you.
Next we have Richard Galindo, followed by Julian Perez.
Hello, my name's Richard Galindo, I have a progress statement. I'd like to say, I live in Hemet, I moved here, and I live out here, that's exactly what I needed as a disabled veteran, and working with Joe Males, doing some of his activities, and at the Post 53, American Legion, he's done great work. I just like to say, I think the reason why Kenneth Graff brought the suit against Joe Males was revolting, he disrespected the 57% voters that voted for Joe Males. Kenneth Graff, Howard Rosenthal, Eric Gosh, Josella Gosh, Kevin Ferencope, Edward Formica, Barney Wright, Lori Arsdale, we, the citizens of this great community of Hemet, we have our on you. And to the City Council members, I implore you, remember who you're supposed to serve, because I assure you, we, the voters of this community, will. Thank you.
Thank you, next we have Julian Perez, followed by Christian Tikas.
First of all, before I start anything, I want to thank all our councilmen, our mayor, and the city attorney, and everybody for doing a great job in striving to change Hemet. Now, my name's Julian Perez, I am the son of Spider Perez, which has been here for many years. My family has investment into this city, since we've been here since 1952, and so I've seen the change of good, the bad, and now the good coming back. One thing about Joe that a lot of people don't know is that, that we need to know is, our land has forgotten who the Lord is, that that man has forgotten who it is. He's gone through pain, he's gone through everything, he comes to my house, delivers, he just had an operation, food to my house is very important. What I have invested here too is that I am the one to start the first all-veterans wheelchair team with my, my partners over there, they now took over as a thing there, some bearing partner, with Michael Wolford and Jerry Chase. If it wasn't for them, we wouldn't be able to do that, but we represent Hemet, we don't represent, we could have been Paris, we could have been San Jacinto, but we're Hemet. The other thing that's disgusting to me, is somebody that I've always treasured was a God Brown, but to hear that they're backing up stuff to take people away is, to me, very disgusting. And when I see Eric, I would tell him myself, and the one thing that I am proud of, I have two legionnaires that are part of your board, and it's very honoring to be a legionnaire also. You see, with as many of us legionnaires here, one, because we care about Hemet. The next thing that I think you guys need to look at is the great job that you're doing, finally getting all the handicapped access to the roads and stuff, and we need that, and you can see where our chairs are all beat up and everything because of all the handicap problems that our roads have, you need to give yourself a clap for that. One more thing before I leave is, you know, I'm not going to name any names, because they've already been said to everybody, but I will put a challenge out to you, Linda, even though I don't know you personally, I know you've been on the board for quite a while, and Russ, and you guys, I wish you would look at one thing, don't look at what day something happened, it was a handshake, and you've got to remember, in this United States, every contract started with handshake, and that's a legal binding contract in the whole United States. Another thing is, it would be disgusting to go and have something going on with, behind people's backs, which I know City Hemet's done, okay, before, I'm not saying it's going now, and before, but the main thing that I'm looking at is, let's save Hemet money. We don't, I heard there's an interim position, I believe, or something like that, that the mayor can authorize somebody to be a councilman, let's put that in action, that's what it's there for, to keep this kind of stuff away from people, you know, and I think it's there, I don't have the right terminology of the name, but I think you guys know what I'm talking about. And another thing, you know, I look at you guys, and I say, do the right thing, play about it first. Thank you.
Christian Tikas, followed by Hope Rhodes.
Good evening, City Council, my name's Christian Tikas, I'm coming here from, actually, I live in Worcester area, but I have a heart invested in Hemet, because we run a weekly outreach that helps clean up the city and also get people off the streets. And my, really what's been on my heart is to speak on Joe's character, and what I've witnessed in the last couple months that I've already met him, he's come out and he's definitely shown that he has a heart for the city, not only by the people that we interact with, but also the people that are part of this organization that comes around Living Way and other churches that are, that are coming out and volunteering their time, and it's great to see that someone's willing to get dirty with us, and to really care about the relationships that we come across, because that's been my thing about why there's poverty, why there's homelessness, it's because of the lack of healthy relationships. So seeing that Joe values relationships, he values what he, you know, whether it's a person that we're talking to, or persons that are helping out, that's him, that's him, he wants to, his willingness to help, and since he's been elected, it's obvious that he's struck a chord with a lot of people on that. I mean, I just saw that he won by the 57% percentile of the votes, and that's substantial, especially with the person, you know, below, that hasn't, that was, was a half of the votes that they got. And one of the things that I've witnessed too, on behalf of Joe's character, is faithfulness, his faithfulness in God, his faithfulness knowing that whatever he's dealing with, and I know he's gone through some tragedy in his past, that God's going to see him through it, and that God is really his spearhead for him, regardless of what happens throughout all this. So I'm really just here to just vouch, in a sense, what I've been witnessing, his faithfulness, and one of the things that I do want to share is a verse that came to mind, because this happens often, there's persecution, there's people that don't necessarily agree, but when the person's heart is in the right place, especially aligned with God's heart, there's nothing stopping God's heart. So this is out of Psalms 94, verse 14, it says, "The Lord will not reject his people, he will not abandon his special possessions. Judgment will again be founded on justice, and those with virtuous hearts will pursue it." And it's very simple, I mean, I see the virtue that comes out of him, I see in the times that he's come, and he's actually been vulnerable to share his things that he needs prayer for, and I respect that in a man, because we are not at all flawless individuals, we all have flaws, and for me personally, you know, I see the change in Hemet, I've had invested interests years, my family's lived here for the last 30 years, and I see that the change is happening, and when I see the change is lined up with God's will, there's nothing stopping that. So whether he gets used or not, I still see God at the head of this whole thing, but when you line up with God, there's nothing that can stand against it, simple as that. Thank you for your time.
Hope Rhodes, followed by Larry Blair.
Hi, good evening, I don't know if you can hear me or not, probably can. First of all, I've been a resident of Hemet for about seven and a half years, my husband and I came back from Georgia, and the last place I asked the Lord not to send us was Hemet, and he did, so I know that we're here for a reason, and I've got to know Carly, not in the realm of politics, but as a human being, and also Joe, and also Malcolm, and I just want to touch base more on so much, Joe is, he has come out with us on Saturday mornings, but he walked through the alleys with me, and the alley that we walked through was just covered in like feces, covered in trash, covered in furniture, and he was the first one to beeline right there and say, let's go, and he was literally picking up trash with us, and I thought, this is a person who is not above us, but he is a human, just like the rest of us, and he cares about the people. And it's not even so much about the trash, that's why we're out there, it's about the people, it's about the broken human beings, it's about the women who are being abused, trafficked, the homeless, the drug addiction, the mental illness that's rampant in our city, it's not even, that's just a minor issue, what's going on, but he has a heart to want to see change, and I look at the five of you right now, and I see a dream team. I see the five of you working together with us, the people, to come together united and not be about politics, because the more politics are involved, the less the people matter, and we need to start coming together as like a family, as a city, as a unity, and the only way to do that is to keep those who are supposed to be in office to do the job that God's called us to do, because we can't do anything on our own, we have to come together, and I've been here seven years, seven and a half years, and I've seen the good, the bad, the ugly, and I'm starting to see the good again, because I am one of these people that are out in the streets, I am in the hoods, literally, I'm talking the rough areas, as to where like we're knocking on doors and giving people food, and it's a rough area, it's gang infested, and we're still going in there and loving on these people, and I see Joe doing the same thing, and I'm like, wow, this is cool, I've seen Harvey do the same thing, and I see Malcolm out there, I mean, I don't know you two personally, but I'm sure you're wonderful people, I mean, you're people, and you matter too. So my heart is for your heart to hopefully continue to keep Joe in office, because it's not about politics, it's really about human life, and we need to start coming together, because this world is already falling apart, and we need to be a city that's united, and to do that, we have to come together. So thank you very much for your time, and God bless you.
Larry Blair, followed by William Hendrickson.
Good evening, City Council, and once again, nice to see all of you. I'm here obviously to support Joe Males, I'm an adjutant for American Legion Post 53, I'm also a new city employee, or city liver person lives here, Himalaya, I guess they call them, in Hemet, I just recently got divorced and moved here, but what I want to talk about people is Joe. I'm kind of winning, so I'll try to cut it down, but Russ, I know you, I know you, Linda, I know Malcolm, not well, but I know everybody pretty much in here, and I do believe that you guys represent a good team. Carly, you're an excellent mayor, I love the way you care for people, I've known you for years. And Joe is one of those people that I've been through a lot over the last year, I've lost two of my daughters, I've lost my marriage, I've lost seeing my grandkids for months at a time, which has been hard, and Joe's lost a son, and yet he still has enough caring for people to say, Larry, what can I do, how can I help you? And he gives me a hug if I need it, I broke down and cried at the post one day, because I just had so much that overwhelmed me, but he always gives, and gives, and gives, it doesn't matter, I could go over and ask him for $20, $100, he'd give it to me, that's just the way he is. He, I would say, single-handedly, with the help of a few of us, has increased our post from, to the point where it almost died a couple years ago, to where we now have over 455 people. That's friggin' amazing, and that's all because of his leadership, all because of the love that he shows all of us, and the community. I mean, it's every day, he's on the phone constantly, talking to people, what can I do for you, how can I help you, you know, can I bring you food, can I bring you clothes? I mean, that's the way he is, it's just all the time he helps, he never asks nothing for himself, but I do ask, I want him to be a city councilman, and I really, really hope that all of you will vote him back in to be a city councilman, because you're not going to get anything better than him.
William Hendrickson, followed by Johnny Sandoval.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, I'm William Hendrickson, a member of your community, also veteran. I've served this country to keep it free from tyranny. And I can't help but see the tyranny that is going through our county today, especially with the special interest groups, that seem to have no respect for our vote. We held an election November 2020, where City Council Representative Joe Malls won two to one. In an overwhelming victory, I want to see that our vote count. I'm tired of our politics being run wild in our city. I have two options here for you. One, the City Council, vote an interim council member. Number two, do we have a special election? Now, we all know number two ain't going to happen, because that's going to cost too much money. So the only option is number one. It's the only reasonable choice, and I want to see Joe Malls voted in as interim council member. If not, whoever votes no, not accept the consequences. Thank you.
Next we have Johnny Sandoval, followed by Ann Smith.
Hi, my name is, hi, you, Mayor, councilmen, councilmembers, I'm Johnny Sandoval, US Needing Veteran, Captain of the War, Veteran Warrior Soccer Team. My family came out here to Hemet in 1984, it was a retirement town, beautiful, no trash, no drugs, nowhere. I've seen this town go from retirement to what it is now today. People are afraid of change, Joe ain't, Joe turned into change of our town. Being in the West, trying to build out our community, we have no sidewalks in certain places, and with places that we do have sidewalks, trying to go from sidewalk to the street, there's a risk of violence. Joe was trying to make a change in where we can get better sidewalks, better streets. It's been the same since, these streets have not been paved or fixed since 1984. So Joe's done a good, awesome job so far, he won 57%, what's under that? He won by a landslide. What's that mean to that? He won by a landslide. We want our votes honored. Keep Joe in his seat. Friends of Joe, 57%.
These are my veterans. I love them.
Next we have Ann Smith, followed by Barney Rosen Jr.
Rosen. Rosen Jr. Good evening, City Council members, Mayor Meyer, Pro-Tam Mayor Joe Males. I also want to add, I don't know that I can say anything any different than anybody else has. I've had contact with just about everybody that's on the council, probably, maybe more than I know no longer, I think, than anybody else. But I'm also here, and forgive me for not looking directly at you, I wrote it down because I don't trust my memory. I'm here to support Joe Males too, Pro-Tam Mayor Joe Males, for his bid to retain a seat in the Hemet City Council. Someone to vote, and everybody already knows, by 7, 57%, which is the largest margin in the history of Hemet. Yeah, the San Jacinto Hemet Action Committee, and I'm gonna give you the website, because I want you all to go take a look at it, is seeking to play dirty politics. I hate to be negative, but that's basically what they're doing. And they're using an individual, let's just call who it is, they're using Ken Graff to do their dirty work. Sorry, Ken, I hope you're watching. Anyway, you know, I'd really like to know who the contributors, well, actually, I know who the contributors of Mike Miguel's campaign were, and you all can find out who contributed to his campaign too, by sending a request for public information to our brand-new city clerk, who's a great guy, by the way. It's called the 760, and if you can't find it, I have it, and if you want to send me a message on Facebook, I'll be glad to send it to you. And then you can see for yourself what names match up to the action committee, okay? I'm also requesting that when you vote on an interim council member, that you would please consider nominating and voting Joe Males in as the interim city council member. I don't know, I don't want to repeat what everybody else has said. I feel the same way everybody else feels. I've seen, I've seen this city council basically do more in the last six months than I've seen in the last six years. And I'd like to see it keep going. So thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. We have Barney Rosen Jr., followed by Erica London.
I've tried to live by a credo, do the right thing. I haven't always, my wife's told me that. In fact, she's actually a friend of the other person's. But I came down here tonight anyway, a little bit of snarly growl in the background, do the right thing. People are sick to death in this country of traditional politics. Now, I'm not on the left or the right, I pick each issue. Joe Males won this election. He won it by 57%. And a group of people, we used to call them in New York, mockers, big shots, are trying to steal the election, because they want control of the city, like they always have. And no, I'm gonna commit on this. One thing I've learned, is you don't get the veterans upset, and you don't get the religious people upset, because they don't quit. They will keep coming back and back. So will I. Do the right thing. Honor the will of the people. Do not allow liars, cheats, and big shots to run us. I've seen this before. The same group tried to sell the school district 20 years ago, the old Gosh Ford and another dealership, what the school district was gonna use it for, I don't know. But the Goshes had their burger on the board, and he got kicked off because of conflict of interest. And though the district didn't buy the property. I know Joe from the Yelts. I'm the Americanism Chairman there. I run the essay contest, the fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. Except for this year, we usually run 500 essays. Joe helped me grade them once. I'm also the chairman of the Most Valuable Student Scholarship. Three students in this area got over $4,000 this year, for four years. People want things like this. I'm telling you right now, I've been on the phone with Yelts, with my friends, and they're upset. They know Joe. Please give him that position.
Erica London, followed by Terry Leonard.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Thank you for giving us this opportunity this evening. I need to start off by saying I have very intimate friends on both sides of this fight. Integrity puts your personal feelings to the side and stands up to say what is right. I consider myself a city leader. I am a community specialist, and I've studied this community for going on about six years. I don't know all the facts of this case, but what I do know is integrity shows up. This is integrity. This is integrity. Whether right or wrong, integrity stands up and says, I have a voice. Integrity stands up and say, maybe a handshake wasn't enough to exact the black and white words on a piece of paper. Coward runs away. Coward stays home. Integrity shows up. This is a city of Hemet that I've dedicated my life to fighting for. Now, I never had the honor of serving our country, but there's many in this room, some who can't walk, that stood right here and stood up because of integrity. We as leaders, we're here for the best interest of the city. We need to encourage integrity. We need to encourage unity, and encourage the good for all. Dissension and divide have come down from the US Capitol to our state Capitol. Now they're trying to make their home right here in Hemet. Not on my watch. I refuse to give in to any enemy. The same way the gentlemen who served this country, and the women who have served this country, sit in this room today to stand up for a man who gave his life, who served a city, who stole his son. He didn't run. He stands up for us. He stands up for you. Again, I don't know Joe. I don't know what he signed, but I know Joe's a man of integrity. I've talked to people who were at their very lowest in life. They lost their houses to fire. They had their windows smashed, not even in his district. This man messages me, you have them call Joe Males. Joe serves this country, not just the country, but this city, personally, professionally, and with a heart of servitude. And it is an honor to call you friends, Joe Males.
Terry, followed by Matt Casey.
Good evening, Council. My name is Terry Larned, and I've lived in Hemet for, how old is it, 2010. And my mom moved here back in 96, so I've been coming to the city for quite a long time. Earlier today, I was talking to Joe about if you knew how these districts were still were formed. When I first came into the city council meetings, there was no districts. Well, we had this attorney in Santa Monica who decided he wanted to make some extra money. So he looks at all the cities of a certain size, and looks at a certain statute, and says that, oh, these cities have to have districts, otherwise I'm gonna sue them. So he sends out these letters all across the state of California, and Hemet was one of them, and so we had to have districts. So, like I said, I came to these city council meetings long before we had districts. And the city had to go out and spend money, which districts were gonna be which, and they stated that you had to live in each one of these districts if you were going to become a member of the city council. Now, Joe showed me his, the website, and it doesn't say anything about that. It just says you have to be a member, or I should say, a citizen of Hemet to run for the city council. I think we ought to change the city website, so we don't have this confusion later on, so other people won't go through the same thing that Joe's going through, because that's the basis, I think, for this guy's lawsuit and the annulment, because they said that he was not in that district. Yet he was, he had to go ahead and move into that district so that he could, but he's been a citizen of this town. And I've known Joe for quite a while, I'm a member of the American Legion Post also 53, and so I know two of the members up here personally. And I even campaigned for Linda and for Barney when they first started running. This, this town needs somebody like Joe. As you've heard people talk about all night tonight, how gracious and how big this man is. You look up Isaiah 125, talks about faithfulness and honesty, that's Joe. This city needs people like Joe to turn this around, so that we have a better community. This man fights for our community. He goes out there, as you've heard tale after story, this guy goes out there and he'll work, and he'll do things for this city. You need a problem fixed, go to Joe, he'll see what he can do to help fix that. So I'm all for Joe, and I hope that the city council will go ahead and get him as an interim council member, because you can't let Joe get away. We need this man. Thank you.
Matt Casey, followed by Ronnie Eimal.
Many of you on the council, Mayor, know me from my past service with the American Legion. I was commander for four years. There was a significant cancer that tried to come in. Luckily, that cancer got eliminated, and Joe took over. This is affecting, this testimonial, it's affecting my PTSD. So I'm gonna really wish my minutes to Ronnie Eimal.
Council, Mayor, City Manager, our new accountant, and all of you citizens, my name is Ronnie Eimal. I'm very proud to be a member of the American Legion. My job in this community is to help veterans file claims against the government of the United States for their service. I'm a fighter, I've always been a fighter. I have many awards and decorations for my valor in war, and I have even more for doing what I do now. I personally have not met a better man than Joe Males. I'm not talking about for council, I'm not talking about for the American Legion, I'm talking about I've not met a better man. I've been on the battlefield, I've fought next to some very brave men. Let me just tell you about Joe Males. I show up to the post, 8:30 in the morning, getting ready to go to work at 9:00, he's out there on the street picking up cigarette butts and paper. He's putting out the trash for the post. He's already fielded two or three of my veterans that are there waiting for me. So I decide, this isn't gonna work for me. I'm gonna show up earlier. I get there, and he's out there picking up the stuff. There's no way, I, I'm gonna echo what you've already heard, but in another way. I'm there, I'm with him. I have seen him, he's not a rich man. Most of the people in this room know he's not a rich man with money. He's the richest man in this room. He's the richest man in this city. He goes out to help people intentionally every single day to help somebody. He has nothing else on his mind except to help another human being. And I'm saying that from the bottom of my heart, it's the truth. It's what he does. I have something that I do. I help veterans, and I said, I get lots of awards and decorations for it, and I do. I can't help everybody. I don't know where this man gets his energy. He's been terminally ill several times. He just recently went and had a medical procedure, and he was back to work the next day. At work? He volunteers. You don't get paid for what he does. He's volunteering here. He's helping people. I have seen him stay until 10 o'clock at night to get some homeless woman a motel room that's a veteran. I've worked. To make sure that she's not gonna sleep on the street. I've been with him, we've gone out to food places and collected up food. He has helped me. He has helped me personally. I have a group of veterans, I have about 75 on my roster up in Mountain Center, that's the mountain area above here, above Hemet. I have some veterans that are in pretty bad shape. They don't know from week to week if they're gonna have food or not. Joe has helped us get together packages to make sure they can eat, to make sure their kids can eat. We've gathered up clothes from our locker there at the post that have been donated, and we've separated them out, and he personally has gotten the sizes to make sure that we help. We've taken whole families that needed help, and Joe is spearheaded getting them an apartment, getting them furniture. Yes, Mike, Mike has helped, these guys have helped. We fixed their cars. Joe has come to me and said, Ronnie, can you get us a car? I have a foundation, it's called Veterans Paying Forward. We take in boats and bicycles and cars, and we give them out to veterans. We get them fixed, and we give them to veterans. Joe goes and gets the cars. He, he helps me find vehicles so we can give them to veterans that need the transportation. There is no way, there's anybody else in this city can do the thing that that guy does. There's nobody to replace him. I've already said on Facebook, he's the man. He is the man for this city. He's in the right place, at the right time, to, to help the people of our city, not just the city of Hemet, San Jacinto, Winchester, he helps in the whole community. He doesn't care, if you're a human being, he's gonna help you. Let me bring up a very, very tardy, negative thing that nobody wants to talk about. Almost everybody I know wants to avoid this big, this big BS statement, but it's just true. Look around the community. Look around the community. We're a major Hispanic community. We're gonna get rid of the only Hispanic guy on the board? I don't know if some of you have Hispanic, I, what is that? I, I got a county paper, I got a volunteer thing in my hand, and every time I look around, state, federal government, city, police associations, fire departments, what race are you? Come on. Come on. I deal with veterans from all walks of life. I cannot see color. In a two-to-one margin for winning the election? Council has to do the right thing. We must do the right thing. It's right in front of us. We have a man of the times, a man of the country. The Marine.
Next, we have Miguel Pino.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, all for your service, by the way. Uh, I'm, uh, I grew up here. I just recently moved back. And, uh, I made some, had some time in LA, you know, traveled, lived out there for a long time. Moved to Temecula, lived out there, but the goal was always to move back. I was born, I was born in Riverside, day one. I was brought into the valley, and I've been here. I was raised here. My mom, she, uh, she graduated from Hemet High. My dad graduated from San Jacinto. You know, my family has a long history here in this, this city. I saw this city go from good to what it is now, which is not good. And I, I hope and pray that it becomes what I see it could be, you know? And it's, it's a beautiful, I, they're, having been to LA, having been to Temecula and all these other cities, there's nothing like Hemet out there. And I've always said it. I've always had love for this town. But when I tell people, "Hey, I'm moving back to Hemet," and people that live here, my family, saying, "Don't move back. It's not what it used to be. It's gross. You don't want it here." But I've always loved it here. And I bring my wife, we were going to buy a house here. Didn't work out. Got outbid. Market went crazy. I'm a real estate agent. I'm a contractor. Market went crazy, so we said, "Let's rent." So we go to rent a house. We talk to the guy. The guy says, "My wife..." Keep in mind, we have great credit scores, whatever, and we have great work history. We talked to this gentleman, and he doesn't want to rent to us because he has Section 8 coming in. He doesn't want to fix things in the house because he has Section 8 coming in. So, as city council, I want to see, I want to know what you guys are doing to rectify the Section 8 situation that we have here in Hemet that created what it is between State Street and Western or the Lion now. I mean, and it's traveling further. You know, there, there's, there's got to be something that's got to be done about this Section 8 situation here in this town. Because all it does, all, all that's coming in now is investors. They're going Section 8, and none of them have been here. They're renting to Section 8, people coming from LA who are getting stipends. They have no idea what this town has been, what this, this community is. They have no love for this community. And they're turning it into what it is now. I lived in LA. I've seen LA. I used to drive Uber in LA. I did 13,000 trips to, drove people from every walk of life out there. So I've seen the types of people that move to inner cities. I've seen the type of people that move to nice neighborhoods. You know, and the issue is Section 8 in this town. The issue is what this town has always been, which is the bureaucracy, which is the evil that all these people are talking of, that somebody could win by 57% and still lose. I, I, I've been around, I've been a fly on the wall plenty of times to hear people talk about, "Hey, who are we getting in next, city council?" Not who's going to be voted in, who are we getting in? None of this is right. You know, this, what I'm hearing, I don't know Joe Males. I, he sounds like a great guy. He's an inspiration to me, just based off of what these people are saying. And I, you know, as a young man, youngish, I pray that I become a man like him, you know? And, and I have a scripture for this situation. It's Ephesians, which is one of my favorite scriptures. It's, "Take no works and, take no part in unproven works of darkness, but instead expose them. For that which becomes visible is light." So, what's going on here isn't, isn't right. So something has to be exposed. Something has to change. This gentleman seems like he wants to make change. I want to see change. From what I've seen, coming from the outside in and going from the inside out, still sharing this love for this town. This town needs somebody like him. This town needs more people, hopefully all, every one of you are in the same boat, trying to fix this town for, for the better. Because I plan on being a part of it in every, any way I can. You know, I, I lived here now for two weeks, and I'm, I'm, I'm ready to go. I'm ready to see it. So, you know, I, like I said, I can't fully represent him because I, I don't speak out of ignorance. So, I, I say give the people what they voted for. And thank you, guys, for all of your...
Before we conclude our public comment, do we have anyone on the teleconference line?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, give me just one moment. I do have several folks on, on the teleconference line. If you wish to speak and you're on teleconference, I ask that you raise your hand or unmute yourself. And we're going to give them a few seconds because there is a delay. Seeing no one raise their hand, I believe that concludes public comment, Madam Mayor.
Hey, thank you very much. Um, thank you, everyone, for coming, and... Um, if you go up to the mic, then, but we need, and then this will be the last comment. That's okay.
I don't need no mic. I bring this challenge to every single one of you that are up there. And this challenge is, what is more important? Time or what the people want? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, and I want to definitely say thank you to all the veterans for your service and for giving us our freedom.
I want to thank you all for coming and speaking on my behalf. I thank you very much. Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we have a public hearing. We are going to hear from HP first.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. Right before you is a MSHCP NEXUS study and LDMF update. So, a little bit about the proposal. This is to update the local development mitigation fee for funding the preservation of natural ecosystems in accordance with the Western Riverside County Multi-Species Habitat Conservation Plan and Local Development Mitigation Fee Resolution. A little bit of background.
Is there any way you can turn his mic up a little bit, John Paul?
City Hemet is a member agency for the Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority, RCA. The RCA was formed to acquire, administer, operate, and maintain land and facilities to establish habitat reserves for the conservation and protection of species covered by the Western Riverside County Multi-Species Habitat Conservation Plan. This plan was adopted in 2004 to focus on permanent conservation of 500,000 acres and protecting 146 species, including 33 endangered and threatened species. The city of Hemet receives of local Measure A sales tax funds for local streets and roads and conditioned upon the city of Hemet participating in MSHCP. The MSHCP requires a NEXUS study under the Mitigation Fee Act to establish a local development mitigation fee that would then be adopted by each jurisdiction participating in the MSHCP. The LDMF pays for the acquisition of additional reserved lands to meet the target conservation acreage that local governments are responsible to acquire per the plan. The original NEXUS study was completed in 2003, coinciding with the adoption of the MSHCP implementing agreement and signing of the permits. Section 8.5.1 of the MSHCP allows the fee to be reevaluated and revised should it found to insufficiently cover mitigation for new development. Based on the 2003 NEXUS study, the city of Hemet adopted and implemented an ordinance authorizing the imposition of the LDMF. The Presuential Mitigation Fee Act, RCA, prepared a new NEXUS study, 2020 NEXUS study, to update the fees for the first time since its original adoption. In December 7, 2020, the RCA Board of Directors adopted the 2020 NEXUS study. An updated NEXUS study was needed to ensure adequate funding to complete reserve acquisition to fulfill local government's responsibilities under the MSHCP. Over the 16 years, many assumptions were not, not reality on land dedication and reduction in state and federal fundings. Here's a dad, the 2020 NEXUS study calculated the expected cost to complete additional reserved land acquisition, managed conservation lands in perpetuity via an endowment and administration of the MSHCP. The next study extends the reserve acquisition period by an additional 15 years. It currently ends on 2029. So what is the purpose? The purpose is to identify the purpose of the revised fees, to identify the, identify the use to, which the revised fees is to be put, include, including identification of any facilities to be financed. Three, determines how there is a responsible relationship between the fees' use and the type of development project on which the fee is imposed. Four, determines how there is a reasonable relationship between the needs of the public facilities and the type of development project upon which fee is imposed. And five, determines how there is a reasonable relationship between the amount of the fees and the cost of public facilities, or portion of the public facilities attributable to the development of which the fee is imposed. Current fee for the MSHCP is broken down in this manner. For less than eight dwelling units of development, the fee of 2,168. Residential between 8 and 14 is 1388. Greater than 14 is 1127. Commercial and industrial fees are $7,382 per acre, and there is a current city's administration fee of 1% of that total. What they're proposing, effective July 1st, 2021 through December of this year, fee will increase to 2,935. From 8 to 14 is 1,473. And there's an actual reduction for 14 or greater dwelling units per acre, which is $670. The commercial and industrial fees will increase to $11,982, and the city administrative fee will stay at 1%. Effective January 1st of 2022, the fees will increase to $8,635, 1,515. The greater than 14 will stay the same at 670, and the commercial and industrial will increase to 16,350 dollars per acre. Again, the city administration fee will stay at 1%. So it is respectfully recommended that the city council adopt an ordinance amending and updating the city of Hemet's Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan ordinance, and two, adopt the resolution adopting Multi-Species Habitat Conservation Plan Local Development Mitigation Fee Schedule. With that, we have minor corrections that we have to do for the ordinance and resol. This was a typo and the date correction. And also, the RCA staff is available to answer any questions you may have. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Before we start, I'll open the public hearing. City Clerk, do we have any comments in favor of or in opposition to?
We have no public comments registered. I just want to allow on the teleconference, if there's anyone who wishes to speak, you have to raise your hand now or unmute yourself. This is the time to speak. Seeing none, Madam Mayor, there's no registered public comments.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. All right, we'll bring it back to council. Do we have any questions, comments for staff?
Thank you, Carly. Basically, this, this is an increased fee on commercial and residential building. It is part of the JPA that we all belong to for the RCA, and that's the habitats, multi-species habitat. And since the inception of this, I've sat on this board either as the main person or the alternate. And while I disagree with a whole lot that goes on, I will have to say the establishment of the RCA has allowed streets and road building to go forward in a more mitigated manner because that's exactly what RCA does. It sets land aside with the 106, I think it is, endangered species, and provides area for not only birds, gnats, gophers, K rats, but also plants and things. And it is a preservation of natural resources in Southern Cali, actually, Western Riverside County. The impetus of this NEXUS study was because they haven't had any increases in these rates to developers, and they stopped having a yearly or two-year increase back in nearly 2000s when the market dropped and their construction basically stopped. WRCOG got into the same pickle with the TUMP fees when they decided that cities could stop paying their fees or have the developers stop paying fees during that period of time. And then when the economy started rebounding, they had to jump in with massive increases. The difference is on, on the WRCOG, TUMP fees, Hemet never stopped charging. So, we, we got off better. On this one, it was the unanimous decision of the RCA board to hold off on any increases. So now we see this, what I consider a very huge increase, not only on residential, but definitely on the commercial area. While not agreeing to this would be more harmful to the city, it, it goes against, you know, my, my personal belief that we already overcharged developers a whole lot of stuff, but it is something that we, as a city, belong to. And, well, I disagreed with it at the RCA board. We're between a rock and a hard spot in, in many issues on this, although these do get settled by mitigation, and it is a necessary, it's one of those necessary evils that we all go through. So, you know, I will, I vote my opposition to all of these things, but in the best interest of the city, I do have to vote yes when we, when we vote on it.
And City Clerk, I mean, I'm sorry, City Manager, you spoke with the Building Industry Association. Could you tell us? Way in on this?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. About a month and a half ago, I had a chance to have lunch with the executive director of the BIA, and we talked specifically about this item. And their position on this was that, you know, obviously, as council member Krupa alluded to, increases in fees are not the most, you know, palatable thing for developers to hear about. They do believe that based on the NEXUS study and how they've situated this, that it is in the best interest for long-term development for the industry, and it really helps alleviate or create some stability in the future about what they can expect on a go-forward basis. So, that was the information that was conveyed to me. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. HB, thank you for the report, and thank you, Linda, for the overview, because I think you put it in the right perspective, and I think I share your feelings. I, I hate to see fees go up because they're all going to get passed through at some point. So the cost of, of new development is going to go up, and that's going to be borne by the consumer. But I think, all things considered, I would agree that this is a necessary evil. And I just, one of the things that I keyed on in the staff report is this one paragraph, page two, that says, "The city of Hemet's receipt of local A, Measure A, sales tax funds for local streets and roads is conditioned upon the city of Hemet's participation in the MSHCP." And this condition, funding is memorialized in the voter-approved ordinance that authorizes... And this condition, funding is memorialized in the voter-approved ordinance that authorizes Measure A. And previous fiscal year, the City of Hemet received $1.8 million in Measure A funding for local transportation projects. So I didn't want that to be lost in all of the negative aspects of this, because we do receive Measure A money, and that's what we use to work on improving our streets and our sidewalks and things like that. So there is a cost-benefit element to this that benefits the city as well. I just wanted to make sure I pointed that out.
If I could just add to that, if we say no to this, we are in jeopardy of losing our Measure A funding, because it's all connected to the MSHCP. That's why I meant by a rock and a hard spot.
Right. All right, any other comments?
I just think we're, you know, we try to bring development in, and if we're raising our fees, that's going to slow the process down and getting businesses out here. But if we lose Measure A, that's going to be a really bad thing for us. So I, it's hard. Hard to make a decision on it.
Malcolm, you have anything? All right, council, this is, staff is recommending introduce the first reading and to adopt this resolution. So I'll make that motion to introduce for first reading, read by title and wave further the ordinance, and number two, adopt a resolution of the City Council establishing the Western Riverside County Multiple Species Conservation Plan Local Development Mitigation Fee applicable to all developments in the plan area. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Russ. Can we have a roll call vote?
Motion by Councilmember Krupa, second by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowenthal?
Yes.
Mayor, put some nails?
Yes, only so we don't lose Measure A money.
Mayor, Mayor?
Yes, unfortunately.
And that motion passes to approve for first reading and wave further reading of the entire text title in order to the City Council of the City of Hemet, California, to update the Local Development Mitigation Fee for funding the Preservation of Natural ecosystems in accordance with the Western Riverside County Multiple Species Habitat Conservation Plan, and to adopt the resolution.
Excellent, thank you. Next, 12B, the Draft Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan.
Good evening, Mayor Meyer and council members. For your consideration, tonight is the 2021-22 Annual Action Program. The Annual Action Plan has been made available from April 2 through May 3 for the required 30-day public review and comment period. The Annual Action Plan is the statement of the city's needs, goals, and objectives for allocating funds to eligible activities recommended and approved for the 2021 program year. Goals and objectives stated in the Annual Action Plan were established in the 2020 and 2024 consolidated plan. As of today, no public comments have been received. In order for the city to receive the $865,629 in CBG funding allocated for 2021-22, and $196,044 of previously unexpended balance, HUD requires a public hearing and City Council adoption prior to submission of the 2021 Annual Action Plan by May 14, 2021.
Excellent. I'll open the public hearing. City Clerk, do we have any comments?
We have no registered public comments, but I want to allow on teleconference, if you wish to speak, please unmute yourself or raise your hand now. Right now is the time to speak for the CBG item. Seeing no one raise their hand, there's no registered public comment.
Great, thank you. I'll close the public hearing. Okay, staff, I mean, council, what is your pleasure here? Staff or? No questions. All right, they are asking for approval of this document. Staff approval. All right, we have a motion to approve as recommended. Do we have a second?
Got it.
Second by Malcolm. All right, can we have a roll call vote?
Motion by Councilmember Krupa, second by Councilmember Lowenthal. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Krupa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lowenthal?
Yes.
Mayor, put some nails?
Yes.
That motion passes 5-0 to approve the document and authorize the city manager to sign the certifications and grant applications for submission on or before May 15, 2021.
Okay, next we have Councilmember Lowenthal with presentations.
Is the representative from the Hemet Women's Club here? Could I have Priscilla Linquist? Linquist? Susan G?
Susan Correto.
Jan Chris? Okay. Do we have Penny? Is it okay if I mention their names?
Yes.
So we also have Reggie Maddox and Susan Carrier. For the Hemet Women's Club, the mayor and the city council express sincere gratitude for your donation of a Chinese pistachio tree, pistachio tree?
Yes.
That was planted at Mary Ann Lee Park in celebration of Arbor Day, presented on 11th day of May in the year 2021. Who likes pistachios? I didn't.
Awesome. Thank you.
I didn't know how, that's how you spelled it. I've never seen it written.
It's misspelled.
Oh. Well, I guess that's my new thing I learned today. All right, I'd like to make a proclamation for National Nurses Week. Is there anyone available to accept this on behalf of all the nurses? So whereas Hemet Global Medical Center nurses provides for the care of a population of over 170,000, and whereas the nurses have valiantly spent this past year working tirelessly to save lives and care for the sick during COVID pandemic, and whereas the pandemic affirms since 1917 has strained healthcare delivery and families back or of the sick, let it be resolved. Hemet Global Medical Center nurses performed at an extraordinary level of healthcare service, and we are proud and most honored to recognize their achievements for being one of the top COVID hospitals in California. They work tirelessly to help families connect to their loved ones and transition the hospital back to routine in healthcare and procedures now that COVID is no longer a dominant factor for our hospital. We resolve to recognize with great pride the accomplishments of the nurses at Hemet Global Medical Center for their work during this pandemic and their consistent and excellent patient care for the routine and surgical cases at Hemet Global Medical Center. Therefore, I, Carly Meyer, Mayor of Hemet, along with the Hemet City Council, do hereby proclaim the week of May 6, 12, 2021 as National Nurses Week. And finally, the City of Hemet would like to make a proclamation for National Bike Month. It couldn't be here tonight, but this is going to, that business that, I forgot that business's name, the Hemet Bike Shop over there, they moved, they moved off of Lion over there, they're next to Lemming Grass now, if you're looking to get some work done on your bikes or trying to get into that world. But whereas the bicycle is a healthy, convenient, financially and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and involvement or enjoyment of Hemet's scenic beauty, local attractions, and friendly neighborhoods, and whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Hemet and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, commuting events, Bike to School Day, Trail Work Days, helmet promotions, charity events, races, or simply getting out and going for a ride. And whereas through the month of May, the residents of Hemet and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, commuting events, again, Bike to School Day, Trail Work Day Hemet, Hemet helmet promotions, charity events, races, or simply by getting out and going for a ride. Hemet's road and trail systems attracts bicyclists each year, providing economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits. Creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the Hemet's economy, attracting tourism dollars, improving traffic safety, supporting student health and learning, and reducing pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads. Hemet Bike Shop and the Hemet Police Department have been promoting bicycling during this month, whereas these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road. Carly Meyer and the City of Hemet does proclaim the month of May as National Bike Month.
Okay, next I apologize, 13A is Dr. Barrett from Hemet Unified School District. Here I thought she was getting an award, and she's giving a presentation, so I apologize.
No worries. Worth the wait. Thank you all for having me this evening. It is a pleasure to be here with the council and with City Manager Lopez. It was great to hear the dialogue tonight. It's what makes a great democracy and having a space and an opportunity to share voice and to really, as so many of them articulated tonight, right here, hear the people. All of that to say, Hemet Unified School District is your school district. It's the community school district, and I could not be more proud to serve the communities that Hemet Unified School District serves and to be part of Hemet, not only as an educator, a leader, but also too as a resident. With that being said, your school district has accomplished great things, and I just feel, given the tone this evening, one of the things that I would want you to know, and I've shared this with you actually before, is that we are one of six districts in the nation that have been selected to partner with the Hewlett Foundation. And part of the why is because, in their words, they described us as having good bones as a community, meaning that it's not just about the work of the district, it's about the work of the community and bringing about lasting change. And so in all of that, I want you to know that I believe that I've been blessed to be part of something very special, and that's inclusive of something that's beyond what happens within the four walls of Hemet Unified School District. In a recent podcast where I was interviewed by a national leader, I described the walls of Hemet Unified School District and the other organizations in our community as something that should be permeable, meaning that we're all working to the same end to improve the space that we're so fortunate to be a part of. And so in that spirit, this evening, thank you for your service, and I have a special gift for you all. You may not think it's special, but I think it's special. Normally, you would be invited to our annual State of the District event, where we share with you not only the work that the district is leading, but for those of you that have attended that event, you know that I like to put you at work to get your input from you to help guide the decision-making in the district. So in the spirit of COVID, nothing is what it normally is, and although we won't have an opportunity to interact in person, what we have created, we also had our annual Principal for a Day event this year too, although it looked different. So this is the way that we've addressed our State of the District, and unfortunately, you're going to have to see my face in this, but when you open it up, it's a video for sure that tells you about this, the district, the state of your district. Hello, I'm Dr. Barrett, Superintendent. We can pause it, fast-forward it, and all these things. So the video for sure, in case you missed me, you can see me this way. And then also on the panel, we, as an organization, we've worked the last five years to build a collective vision as well as our core values. And so you'll see that here on the video brochure, and you'll also see that there are links to other videos, and those things would be telling about the work, for example, that the district is doing with our taxpayer dollars around Measure X. So for example, Little Lake Elementary is undergoing a full modernization. Winchester Elementary, it's been completely gutted, our kids aren't even there right now. They wouldn't be there even if COVID wasn't a thing. We've had to relocate them because of the extent of the construction. So a lot of large projects happening as a result of our taxpayer dollars and what they even trusted us as a school district to do. All of that to say, there are videos about that. This video just kicks off the series. The other thing that I would ask is, I would ask that you enlist with me in being an ambassador for the district and more so for our community. And so with that being said, these little gifts are for you this evening, but if you do own a place of business or if you are in spaces where you interact with a lot of people, you can make this accessible to them as well, and we even have a fancy little charger to go along with it, okay? So don't say I've never given you anything. And so with that, may I approach to pass these out? Thank you, Mayor Meyer.
I was still hoping you're not going to go off and ask the DNI. You're very welcome. A pleasure to meet you, by the way.
I wish our technology was available, and we had to do our State of the City virtually.
And it's very reasonable price as well. It's a lot cheaper than what you would think. We don't know, but they allow you to customize it, so you could like real time. It's nice to meet you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have item 13B, Hemet Streetlight Rebate Program. I'm Daniel Soltero.
Doc, can you queue up the presentation, please?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Members of the City Council, my name is Daniel Soltero, Senior Analyst for WRCOG, and I'm here to present to you today about the City of Hemet's participation in the WRCOG Regional Streetlight Program. Let's start with a little bit of background. In 2014, WRCOG's member agencies approached staff regarding their rising streetlight costs and inability to control those rising costs. Through various feedback and outreach efforts, WRCOG's Executive Committee directed staff to develop a program that would assist jurisdictions with reducing their streetlight electricity bills as well as lowering their overall energy consumption. And so through that, WRCOG developed Regional Streetlight Program, which had four major objectives, which are to save energy, reduce your energy utility bills, increase public safety, as well as create smart city and revenue-generating opportunities. The Regional Streetlight Program includes 11 jurisdictions across Western Riverside County, including- including the city of Hemet. And overall, the program included over 50,000 streetlights that were purchased from Southern California Edison and then retrofitted to LED. The new LEDs adhere to a number of LED recommendations, including the American Medical Association's recommendations for color temperature, in which WRCOG recommends that color temperature be no greater than 3,000 K. The new LEDs also provide true color perception in the public. And I do have a few pictures to showcase that in these lights. Additionally, the new LEDs support Palomar Observatory's Night Sky objectives, in which we utilize full-cop LED pictures to reduce and mitigate light pollution. And one of the key overall processes that we had with the program was our great partnership with the City of Hemet. In 2017, 2018, WRCOG partnered with the city to implement the LED Streetlight Demonstration Area, in which we invited various LED manufacturers to come out and install their LEDs. And we also invited a lot of various members and stakeholders from the community, including city staff, city leadership, public safety personnel, as well as amateur astronomers and members from the Mount Palomar Observatory. A series of guided tours were hosted here in the city, and we do appreciate that partnership. It was a great way to gain stakeholder feedback regarding the types of LEDs that should be utilized in the community. Overall, the program will save the region about $70 million over 20 years. And so what this means for the City of Hemet is that over 1,700 streetlights were purchased by the city from Southern California Edison. Once purchased, the new streetlights would be retrofitted to LED. And that process started in August 2019 and was completed in July 2020. The city also included over 2,200 of its own city's streetlights, and that brought the total up to 3,900 K. You're just shy of 4,000 streetlights that were converted to LED. And so what that results in is that over $220,000 will be saved on the annual energy utility bill. So this is just on the SCE bills, which signifies about a 56% reduction. The energy usage is also reducing by about 51%, so over 471,000 KWh. The energy saved is actually enough to power about 60 homes each year. Quite a bit of energy is being saved here with just the LED streetlight conversion. Next here, I have a few pictures to showcase how the community might be impacted and how the community has changed by the use of the new LED streetlights. On the left, you see the older low-pressure sodium lighting technology, which gave an orange and yellow look in the community. It also washed out colors. So as you can see in the picture at the bottom, the pack of gum is actually, you know, pretty bright, but under the old lighting, you cannot identify any of the colors. On the right, with the new LED streetlights, you can see that the color is much more inviting as far as how the community looks, and you're able to perceive true color perception. This is what an arterial roadway may look like, so one of the larger roadways. You can see that the new streetlights also increase roadway visibility. So a much larger area of road is covered with the new LED streetlights, signified by the reduction of the dark space between poles. And it showcased how the new LED streetlights are adhering to the Mount Palomar Night Sky objectives to mitigate light pollution. We had a contractor fly over the area over various cities that completed their streetlight conversion. On the top here, this is a picture of the City of Temecula. On the top, you see the old low-pressure sodium lighting. In a closer image that I'll show next, you can actually see these bright orbs where the old streetlights are. And that's indicative of light pollution. So that's light going up into the sky. And on the bottom, you'll be able to see it much more clearly in the next picture, but on the bottom, you'll be able to tell that the light pollution has been mitigated. You're no longer able to see those orbs. In fact, you just see the illuminated roadway beneath. So this picture here is a close-up, and it's actually in the City of Hemet and City of San Jacinto. It's over in the east side of town off of Washington Avenue and I believe Park Avenue and Meridian Parkway. And so that area shows the old low-pressure sodium lights, which are the orange-looking lights. So you can actually see orbs at some of them, which are indicative of that light pollution I mentioned earlier. And then the next image, once the LED streetlights were implemented, you actually don't see those bright orbs anymore where the streetlights are. So you just see the roadway beneath as well as the roadway being much more illuminated. And so by utilizing eligible LED streetlight pictures, WRCOG was able to secure a rebate for the City of Hemet. This is a utility rebate that comes from Southern California Edison. And it's important to note that through a lot of advocacy and working with our member agencies, including the City of Hemet, we were able to restore these rebates in a time when SCE was eliminated. And so, as I mentioned, through advocacy and working closely with the City of Hemet and all of our member agencies, we were able to coordinate with the California Public Utilities Commission as well as Southern California Edison to keep these rebates and secure them for the Western Riverside County region, including the City of Hemet. And so with that, we were able to secure a rebate of $172,294 for the City of Hemet. So round of applause to the city. And as part of the presentation, I do have a giant check here to present to you. And if it's okay, I would like to invite the council, perhaps the city manager, to take a picture with me and the check, if you feel comfortable, of course. And yeah, that completes my presentation.
Great, thank you.
I am happy to take any questions or comments before or after.
Yeah, I just, one quick question and also a comment. Did we get a copy of your PowerPoint presentation?
Absolutely.
I appreciate that. And I just want to underscore what I view as not only the monetary benefit of this, of this program, but we heard a lot of comments about the appearance of the city. And one of the things that's always disturbed me is the appearance of the city at night with those sodium lights, because they make things look dingy. And the true color that is generated by the LED lights makes things look cleaner. And then the ex-cop in me really appreciates the true color, because I've always been frustrated that the color of vehicles changes. And many times, a vehicle color is an important part of a description of a vehicle that's wanted in relation to a crime. And one of the things that can be very difficult from the law enforcement side is, you may have a crime report that says the vehicle was a red Chevrolet pickup. And that description was acquired in the daylight. And at nighttime, you're looking for a red Chevrolet pickup, and under those sodium lights, it looks gunmetal grade. I know that because I had a hard time finding my car. When I went into a store in the daylight and came out and it was dark, and I thought, where's my car? And it was right where I parked it, but it was a different color. So I really appreciate all of the more abstract benefits of this whole program, so thank you.
Great, thank you so much for that. Next we have Peter Baronoff, the CEO of KPC Health, for a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Well, I don't have gifts and I don't have a check.
That's okay.
But I'm gonna provide you some updates on how our city's hospital, Hemet Global Medical Center, is doing. With me tonight is Dr. Samantha Chadri-Saney, who is responsible for our graduate medical education program in the hospital, where we have over 70 residents in internal medicine, in family medicine, in radiology, and also happens to be a member of the Hemet Unified School Board, serving two areas tonight. Today is a very interesting day. As I left the hospital at approximately 6:30 tonight, it was the first time in over a year we did not have a COVID patient in a bed. Who knows what the night will bring, but that was good news as I left. And I'm gonna give you a little presentation on some of the various areas and situations that are happening at our hospital right now. As most of you know, our campaign during the pandemic has been safe, ready, open. And in the picture is Dr. Purahid, who is our Chief of Staff of the hospital. The Hemet Hospital has served literally tens of thousands of people who've come in with either being COVID positive or believing that they might have had COVID. The KPC Health gold standard has always been clean airflow, approval of all the various areas that are part of our hospital. And our gold standard includes the strict sanitation of our rooms and a controlled environment for those patients. We have vaccinated to date over 10,000 people in our community. We continue to give vaccinations at the corner of San Jacinto in Florida, Wednesdays and Thursdays from 9:00 to 3:00. It's been a little quiet there lately, so we'd like to see more members of the community take advantage of the vaccinations. We have had an unprecedented level of heroes in healthcare during the past year. The proclamation that I just received, which was a nice surprise for me, really goes to those heroes, who are nurses, our doctors, and many members of the community who've been there to help us. This has been a year unlike any other year. At a recent Community Advisory Board meeting that Chris and Linda attended, I had an opportunity to present what was going on during the pandemic. And obviously, it has created a major change in healthcare, not just from the patients we see, but also new events such as telemedicine, which has become a prominent part of our care delivery. The hospital continues to receive award after award for the care we receive in the hospital, that we perform. And for pneumonia care, women's health, pulmonary care, chronic obstructive care, the hospital continues to be recognized, not only in California, but nationally for the work we do. Our portable vaccine clinic is making its way, headed by Keith Garrison, our Chief Operating Officer of both Hemet and Menefit Global Medical Centers. And we continue to reach out to those that can't come to us for vaccinations. This is a very important program, and it's one of the few hospitals in all of Riverside County that is going portable to its community for vaccinations. This program, at the time we did this, was over 7,000 people. Today, it's over 10,000 people and growing. We were one of the first hospitals that actually did COVID examinations right in a mobile fashion, right across the street from the hospital. If you go by the hospital today, you'll see the Tensor Down, the trailer that had, the refrigerated trailer that has many of those that did not survive the pandemic is no longer there. So we're getting back to normal in our community. The resident program headed by Dr. Chadri-Saney, those residents provide great care along with our physicians during the pandemic crisis. And for the people looking for vaccinations, we have staff on hand who speak both English and Spanish. So I'm making it very brief tonight, because I know you've been here a while. But the Hemet Global Medical Center has really, really, in the last 12 months, performed at a level that we're very proud of. We're ready to go, and we're safe. Most people have avoided the emergency room. Our numbers are down versus the prior year because people are concerned. But we're a safe environment, and we want everyone in the community to know that. That you can come to the hospital and feel very comfortable that you can get the care you need. Many people, and the statistics are nationally, have prolonged their care for diabetes, for heart conditions, for cancer. We don't suggest you do that, that you visit physicians, you take advantage of care, and know that this community has a hospital that really is out there to be there for each and every one of the residents in the community and those visitors that are here. And if you're watching out there, you know we're there for you. I'll answer any questions about, that anyone might have about our care in the community, the pandemic, so please feel free to ask.
Yes, sir. I have a question. I spoke with Keith Garrison about a month ago, and he had mentioned something about utilizing the American Legion to administer the shots, or the vaccines for the veterans. Is that something that you do, or is the hospital will go forward with, or?
Yeah, Keith is actually heading that up. He's been very involved in a program with veterans. Interesting for you to know, too, Councilmember, we have tried to work with our local congresspeople throughout the county to get our hospital to be an alternative veteran site for healthcare. Since the local Veterans Administration hospital is very far away, and for the veterans to travel there, it's really burdensome.
Right, I'm aware of that, and I've been to your hospital and I spoke with a few of your doctors there about that. Also, which vaccine do you give? The Moderna, the Pfizer?
We've given the Pfizer and the Moderna. It's basically what the county allocates us. We don't really get a choice. We haven't received any of the Johnson &amp; Johnson, okay? And, you know, we've brought on-site the large freezers to handle the thousands of doses. And, you know, we'd just like to stress that we do have vaccine, and we'd like people to go to the vaccination center. At the corner of, if you didn't hear me the first time.
Right, I heard you.
San Jacinto, I just want to make sure anyone out there can hear, San Jacinto in Florida.
Now, the only reason I mentioned the American Legion, a lot of veterans have PTSD. They don't trust the government. The vaccines were produced via the government. And they would trust the American Legion if they went there to get their vaccines. I just see that. I've talked to people, and they won't go to a hospital, get vaccine. But I think if it was at the American Legion, they would. You'd get more of a response from our local veterans.
And I know our Chief Operating Officer spends time involved with the veterans, so I'll mention it again tomorrow, but we'd love to have the Legion representatives there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, for being here, and thank you, Samantha. I think it's the first time in many, many, many years that we've had anyone from the hospital coming next presentation to the city, and I really appreciate that. My question is, did the hospital receive any federal funding through the CARES Act?
Yeah, we did. We got our last funds in June. Interesting enough, you know, the biggest height of the pandemic for the hospital was Thanksgiving through almost Valentine's Day, that end of November, February. There are still funds that have been... There are still funds that are available from the previous funding. The current act did not provide any funding for hospitals. So we and many hospitals who serve an underserved population that has a difficult time affording care are still looking to see if we could, you know, provide it some funds.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. And you guys have done an extraordinary job. And the nurses, all the staff at the hospital have gone above and beyond to serve the community. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And we appreciate the work the council does. As someone from another city who was a two-term elected council member and a former mayor, I can tell you, I understand.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Mayor, could I say something? Peter, I just wanted to thank you. The hospital's an absolutely critical part of the city of Hemet, and so we're appreciative of everything that you do. And then also, too, thank you for handling some of the vaccines for our employees. So I just wanted to thank you publicly for that, Peter.
Then we won't wait so many years to get an update. We're in between. How about that? That's a good idea. Yes. Thank you both for coming. All right, next on our agenda, we have item number 14, receive and file. Listed here is the list of warrants. If anyone has any item to pull or to speak about, now is the time. Seeing that we have none, we will receive and file those. Item number 15, consent calendar. All items on this consent calendar will be acted upon by a single action unless someone requests to pull it. So do we have any councilmembers that like to pull any items on the consent calendar? Oh, yes, I'd like to pull 15B. Okay, any other items? Anyone else? All right, we have item 15B pulled. So if someone wants to make a motion for 15A, C, and D?
I move approval of the remaining items on the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion by Russ and Malcolm. Do we have a roll call vote?
We have a motion by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember Paul. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Cooper?
Yes.
Councilmember Paul?
Yes.
Mayor, may I approach him now?
Yes.
Mayor, my?
Yes.
And that motion passes to approve the consent calendar with pulling item 15B.
Excellent. All right, 15B, Councilmember Cooper.
Okay. Let me just start this by saying I agree with, you know, maybe 94%. You guys did a good job. And I listened to the meeting that I had on this last time, and you had good discussion. A couple, just a few questions and comments on it. And it's mostly on the retail, in that I'm wondering if we are looking at this from the perspective of the people that we surveyed who really rely on medical, just marijuana for medical purposes. And through that, I realized that I didn't necessarily have all of the legal definitions that I needed to really ask the right questions. So I did ask our city attorney, that I was going to ask him for legal descriptions of a couple items, and how they pertained to the businesses that are currently in the ordinance. And, well, I'll leave it at that. And asked the city attorney the legal descriptions of CBDs, medicinal and recreational. I kind of know recreational, but, I mean, not personally. But if you would, if you would just explain that, and maybe where, and how they get sold.
Sure. So CBD, or cannabidiol, is an interesting chemical when it comes to the regulatory environment. As you all may know, there is a plant called cannabis sativa. That's where most of the cannabis and cannabis products come from. But when the THC, so that's the psychoactive chemical in cannabis, when that content gets below a certain threshold, it stops for regulatory purposes being cannabis and starts being considered industrial hemp. Now, CBD is a different chemical from THC, right? So again, THC is the thing psychoactive. It's the one that makes people, gives them the high that they're looking for. CBD is a chemical that doesn't really do that. It has different effects, anti-inflammatory effects, and a lot of people claim it has medicinal value. How that CBD is regulated depends on whether it's coming from the hemp plant, so a cannabis plant with low THC, or a cannabis plant with high THC. If it comes from a cannabis plant with high THC, it would be considered cannabis and a cannabis product, and could be sold through a cannabis retailer, like the kind that we are planning on licensing through this process. If it comes through the hemp, it depends, again, on how they're going to use it. And there's a whole bureaucratic nightmare going on still about whether it's a food additive or not. And so, long story short, you would expect to see that product being sold, I believe, in cannabis retail shops. You do see it being used in additives and various other products that are being sold legally in regular stores because they came from plants that are not considered cannabis because of THC content. To the next question, though, the difference between medicinal and recreational is largely a product of history. So we have the Compassionate Use Act back in 1996. We've had various state laws, like the Medical Marijuana Program Act, that established the ability to use marijuana or cannabis for medical purposes. And you see that reflected in the sort of zombie statute that the state has put together, where, you know, you can have a medical cannabis license. It's an M-type license, that's what they're called. And that is cannabis that is intended to be used for medical purposes. And can only be sold to people 18 and older with a physician's recommendation. The other type, adult-use or recreational cannabis, can be sold to anyone 21 years of age and older, and they don't need a physician's recommendation. It is possible, in a city ordinance, to limit the type of license that one would be able to engage in. So we could say you would need an M-type license to engage in retail. That would mean that they would be limited to medicinal cannabis sales only, right? So I think that hopefully, I know it's clear as mud sometimes, hopefully that gives you kind of the groundwork for the different areas you're looking at.
Yes, definitely, and thank you. The next, because, you know, we go into the, oh, we talked about and heard about, the medical dispensary. And there are legal description on the medical dispensary and also of a microbusiness, because I realize that I think I'm confusing what a microbusiness is. And I'm not real sure what a medical dispensary is.
Okay, good. So a microbusiness, and I'm going to, I think the easiest way that when we're talking about defining them is to define them with reference to the state license types that are applicable to those different kinds of businesses, right? So a microbusiness is a very specific license type that allows a licensee to engage in different commercial cannabis activities. So normally, if you're going to be a cultivator, you get a cultivator license. If you're going to be a distributor, you get a distributor license. If you're going to be a retailer, you get a retailer license. A microbusiness allows you to combine a couple of those activities at a small scale, a single business, right? So for example, you can do cultivation, but no more than 10,000 square feet. And you can engage in retail. And you can engage in distribution, all at a single facility. So it takes something that normally is done at maybe an industrial scale and allows it to be done perhaps at a smaller, local craft scale. Now, a microbusiness can be both adult-use or medicinal when it's talking about retail or when it's talking about the cannabis that it is growing for consumption. A medical marijuana dispensary, which is a term that we used to use much more frequently back when we had the Medical Marijuana Program Act, would be a retailer with an M-type license who is solely engaged in the retail sale of cannabis and cannabis products for medicinal use. That means that they can only sell to people who have a physician's recommendation, as opposed to a general retailer, which could sell to people who have physician's recommendations or could sell to anyone over the age of 15.
Okay. Question on a microbusiness. Is it, all of those activities have to be in the same business? I mean, in the same building? Or can they be engaged in those activities and have different businesses? What I'm getting at is, can someone have a grow in San Jacinto and have manufacturing in Hemet and have a retail in Wildomar?
Again, a good question. The regulations that we have in front of us contemplate the activities occurring on a single premises. So if someone was to, for example, have a cultivation site in the city of San Jacinto, they could certainly do that. But they would obviously need to be licensed under the city of San Jacinto, have a state license for that activity at that location. They wouldn't be able to do that activity because of their city of Hemet license.
Okay, but could they then have a retail outlook in Hemet? Or vice versa?
Under the regulations that we have established here, or that are, for second reading, I should say, no. But if you wanted, of course, you know, substitute a minute, you could allow them. I think the way that we're looking at the way that the regulations have been written for the city contemplates those activities being conducted on a synchronous.
On a single site. Okay. And I'll tell you, the more I learn about this, the more I realize I don't know a whole lot. And I know the industry is changing, and I know the laws are changing, and I know Sacramento is trying to get their little fingers into doing things to cities that if cities don't enact their own laws. And I'm definitely in favor of the fact that Hemet establishes its own ordinance. But that, a question was brought up, in fact, I think Mr. Miles brought it up at the last meeting, and it was about the business tax that is collected on deliveries. How is that done? Because I've noticed little signs all over Hemet, you know, about delivery, and I know the new retail establishment in San Jacinto, I'm sure, is doing deliveries in Hemet. How do those taxes get collected? And how do we determine who gets it?
Another good question. So one of the aspects of our regulatory ordinance is that even if you are a licensed retailer from another jurisdiction who are delivering within the city of Hemet, you need to get a Hemet permit, right? So step one is finding out who's selling in the city of Hemet. And step two, and this will be more of a probably city manager project than a city attorney project, we would likely engage the services of one of our tax consultants, like HDL, who does audits on various other taxes implemented by the city. And they have significant experience in doing audits of cannabis-related taxes. And so it would likely of requests for information issued to those businesses that are selling in the city of Hemet, conducting an audit to ensure that they have remitted the appropriate amount of taxes. If they haven't, collecting it from them.
Okay, okay, because then, all of a sudden, I thought, wait a minute, is it like Amazon?
I don't want to promise that it's going to be easy, especially at first, but it is certainly possible.
Okay. And then, I guess what I'm getting down to on this, and let me say, I don't really have a problem with the 1,000-foot, because I believe we have a 1,000-foot limit on smoke shops. But an interesting thing that came up recently with smoke shops and that 1,000 feet was the relocation of an existing smoke shop to an area that had actually placed it further away from a tutoring center, which Planning Commission really deliberated on, on the distance-wise. But the fact that they were closer before was because the tutoring, which is young kids, moved in and didn't have any regulations on them moving in close to a smoke shop. So I thought, you know, are we, how are we doing anything to protect the kids from moving? What if a school district, I mean, school gets built next to a cannabis shop?
You do have the same issue with this ordinance, which is our ordinance as written prohibits a cannabis-related activity from establishing within 1,000 feet of those sensitive uses. If after they establish their business, a daycare wants to open up right across the street, there's nothing in the code that prevents that, and they would be allowed to continue operating. Generally speaking, you know, the idea is we don't want them to have to keep, I mean, there's huge capital requirements for establishing one of these facilities. We don't want them to have to keep moving around the city. And this would allow, I mean, frankly, it's sort of a, the onus is on that sensitive use. It's like purchasing a house, and then they build an airport next to it versus you bought the house next to an already existing airport. You knew that that nuisance, or that type of activity existed already.
Okay, thank you for all of that information. And I'll get back to my original statement that the, my concern is that, I know the proposition on cannabis passed in Hemet by a 51%, 52%, it was a majority, but it wasn't much over that majority. But the survey that we conducted a few years ago, it seems to me that there was a larger percent of individuals who favored medic, and at that point, it was just medical marijuana. And it was a lot of our senior citizens who I know use in whatever form. So I'm just wondering, by limiting or prohibiting the retail aspect of it, if we're doing a disservice to our citizens? And when I, I heard your argument, and I agree. I mean, pot shops are pot shops to me. A medical dispensary, I, well, let's just say, I think it would serve a different clientele. And I think that that's kind of why we included the microbusiness, because a microbusiness has to invest in what they're doing, not just open a smoke shop. Because it's easy to import and, right? But the security levels that we're requiring on the microbusiness itself would make it more like a jewelry store versus, right. And I agree with that, and I think the investment has a lot to do with it. But I will share with you, I've had inquiries from a couple medical doctors who would love to open a medical dispensary in an upscale, you know, part of a commercial zone or even as part of their practice. And I think as we're currently looking at this, we are, we're not allowing that, per se. And I think part of, I mean, my opinion of this is I don't want to have individual pot shops all over. I mean, whether it's medical or not, at this point, there's no difference. And like our ordinance, how we have it written right now, it can be a medical issue that they're going there for, and then they can get what they need. It keeps it clean. If we allow them in many other places, then I think that we are being counterproductive to the whole safety issues that we're trying to fight in our city. So. You know, that's a point. Both ways. I mean, I get it. I understand what you're saying. And, you know, it doesn't mean that it can't change someday, but for us to start at this level and, you know. Well, you know, and that was part of it, too. And I actually wrote it down. I said, you know, it's, sometimes it's real on paper and in theory, but it doesn't, you know, it doesn't pass the test in reality. And I guess that's one of the good things about an ordinance of a city is that we can change it if it doesn't work. And I see the city attorney leaning forward.
Certainly. You know, that is one of the beautiful things about ordinances, is that we can change them. I would say, as a practical matter, it's easier to loosen restrictions than it is to start looser and then go, oh, no, what have we wrought?
True.
And try to back it up.
Yeah, I would agree with that. It absolutely is. That's why we can only be tighter than what the feds and the states say. But, you know, I just had these questions. And again, my concern is some of our constituents who don't do recreational, but do have a medical need.
I think, you know, one of the things... I think, you know, one of the things, I was talking with our cannabis consultant about, you know, where the council ended up, I mean, because obviously, we came with a, with an ordinance, and the council made amendments to it.
Right.
One of the suggestions from the cannabis consultant was, from HDL, was, okay, let's run the application process and see what you get out of it. Are you getting the types of businesses and the access that you're looking for? And if you're not, we, you can force them to look at recalibrating. But it's hard to anticipate what kind of interest you're going to get, just off the bat.
And I would agree with that. And like you said, it's easier to, to listen than it is to say, oops, we made a mistake, and now you can't have a license because we've got too many people interested in this particular portion of it. So, you know, and I would just say, based on that, that people who are interested in opening a business in Hemet and who are willing to have a, a financial buy-in and commitment to our community, come on down and talk. Thank you for all of that. I really, really appreciate the added conversation. We missed you, so it was hard to do it when knowing you weren't here. I'm done with treatments next week, so I'm hoping my energy level will come back, and everything will be, everything will be good.
One second reading.
The two things that I have, one is, we have over 400 veterans at our American Legion, and probably 90% of them have PTSD. They utilize cannabis for their PTSD. They were excited about seeing retail shops going on, up for that purpose, and not having to drive somewhere too far because their PTSD doesn't allow them to do a lot of things. So that's my only concern about retail. And my understanding with retail is that, you know, more security at a retail shop than you do at a regular business, at a bank. And, you know, there are cameras that are in and out of the building, they have their own security, and, and they run it pretty well, is what I hear. But that's just, you know, I understand where you're coming from.
With what we've proposed, it allows retail, but it puts it in areas and, within a micro-business.
Right. Right. And then, the other issue I have is that 1,000-foot yards, whatever it is, I just think that really limits our ability to have companies come out and be a part of this, because it's going to be limited to company, you know, land that's out there and being 1,000 feet away from schools or houses. And I know the, you didn't like the 600-foot, but I was hoping for a compromise of 800 feet, but.
I think when they ran the map to 800 and 1,000, nicked mostly the same areas.
Yeah.
But I just don't want our people to feel like they're not being protected.
Yeah, I understand.
You know what I mean? And so, like, if it's, if it's allowed to be, you know, a buffer zone for a school is 1,000 feet, but we say, oh, your home's only 600, you know, but people have kids at their home, I, if I was that mom, I would be going crazy.
But I said 800, no sense.
So, I would still be that mom. I'm just trying.
Just a couple of questions and comments. I think, as the city attorney pointed out, we can run this up the fly pole at 1,000 feet and, and see what it generates. If we run into a problem, we can always bring back and revisit it. So I don't think it's necessarily a fait accompli that we couldn't adjust it if we, if we think it's necessary. And just clarification on the, on the existing proposed ordinance that we're doing second reading on. It does include delivery?
It does include delivery, citywide. For both businesses located within the city and also any licensed business available.
So I think that that could at least be a reasonable start to address the concern that Linda brought up about some physicians wanting to be able to administer. I think that there's a compromise option there, that, that delivery could be accommodated. And I guess the, one of the concerns that I have about the medicinal marijuana, even before the state allowed recreational, there were, and I'll use, this is my definition, a lot of questionable patrons that you would see coming and going. And apparently, it's pretty easy to get a prescription online for medicinal marijuana. So I think that's one of the concerns that, that I would still have, that in my mind justifies withholding any kind of retail right now. You know, we'll wait and see what happens and what businesses might be attracted. I, I'm pretty confident that we'll get businesses, and I hope by having tight regulations, we'll get quality businesses. And you, you were wanting me to ask a question about, go ahead.
Let me ask. The zoning areas, we've got M1 and M2 and industrial.
CM, M1, M2.
Okay. Do we have any C2 zoning, commercial 2?
We do.
Do. And?
C1 and C2 were originally designated in the original version of the ordinance that came forward for the storefront retail.
And I can only imagine C1 as Florida Avenue and maybe Stepson?
Yeah, that's roughly, although it looks like HP's top end of the bit, so.
Yes.
Here it comes.
Where's, where's the basic C2?
So C1 is more of a neighborhood, so lighter commercial, and C2 is more of the heavier commercial.
Okay, so I had, I had it backwards. Okay, okay. Just, just curious as to how that works out, because I don't always pay attention to the different zoning things. Thank you, HP.
One more question, if you don't mind. Can we do like a map overlay, just to see how that's going to coordinate with the distance between houses? Like take a, you know, a drone picture of all the areas we're looking at and try to see somehow how we can?
They have the 800 in the email.
I'm sorry?
The 800-foot is in our email from last meeting.
Oh, okay.
And then, did you just add?
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Yeah, if I could add some commentary on that. The maps that we provided show the buffer, I think it's 600 feet, and then we showed a buffer at 1,000 feet. And so what that 1,000-foot buffer did was really eliminated the northeastern part of the community, and really maybe allowed one parcel up there to have an operation, but in a very limited capacity. What the 1,000-foot really did was concentrated the area for cannabis operations around the airport. So that's really what it did. I thought they were building homes out there in that area.
Sure.
So that's going to limit us again. Well, it was specifically around the airport, directly adjacent, not in the areas that you're probably thinking about. Is that going to harm our six-lane highway out there? I have a surprise for you on that later on.
All right, so.
Where is 15B?
Yes, get them.
Another thing that I, everybody's talking about all the uses and all that stuff, right? But I think we're forgetting about all the people who are going to get employed. There's going to be a lot of people that, because there's going to be the cultivation aspect and all kinds of things, it's going to actually bring some jobs to Hemet. So I know it's not maybe favorable jobs, but at least, at least we'll be able to put some people who want to work, to work.
All right, 15B, what is your choice?
Ready to make a motion? I waive further reading and adopt by title only an ordinance of the city of Hemet amending Chapter 18 of the Hemet Municipal Code by adding Article 16 concerning the regulation of cannabis businesses.
You have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Malcolm has a second. Can you call it?
Motion by Councilman Brown, second by Councilman Ralento. Councilman Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Ralento.
Yes, with a caveat that we are open to changing in the future if, if business need necessitates it.
Councilman Ral, Councilman Ralento.
Yes.
Mayor of Hennepin. Can I hear that one more time? Russ, please.
My caveat was just that it, we were open to looking at it if, if necessary to, to changing. I mean, if we have a.
We're going forward with it.
We are going forward.
Okay.
Yes, we are.
Yes. That motion passes 502. I waive further reading and adopt by title only an ordinance of the city council of the city of Hemet, California amending Chapter 18 of the Hemet Municipal Code by adding Article 16 concerning the regulation of cannabis businesses.
Thank you. And to Linda's point, everything we do, we have to reanalyze and always make sure that we're doing the best of, right? So not just this topic, but everything that will keep us out of the ruts. All right, next we have 16A, our audit services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Is that better? Tonight, I'm here to present the results from the RFP process, or Request for Proposals for Audit Services. And I have a short presentation and then some discussion that we'll need to have about how we move forward. So Government Code Section 12410.6B requires local agencies to rotate auditors for audit services. Essentially, what the code says is you can't have the same auditing partner on the same audit, like for the same local agency, for six consecutive years. So what we normally do is every five years, we go back out for RFP and request proposals from different auditing firms, and then we rotate through them as, as we see fit. The same audit, oh, sorry. The contract with the Poon Group, which included two one-year extensions, ended with the audit for the fiscal year 1920, fiscal year audit. Last year, council added a comprehensive audit of all transactions to its future agenda items. This item had not been addressed, but at the time that the contract for the Poon Group was due to come up, and we were ready to go out for audit services again, we asked for proposals that included both the standard audit services as well as an alternative first-year comprehensive audit. And the way that it was worded is, for the first year of the agreement only, the city requests an alternate proposal for a more comprehensive audit of all financial transactions without exception. A typical sample selection of transactions, which is what they normally do, will not be accepted for this alternate audit proposal. The city understands the audit will require additional resources to complete, and will work with the firm to provide all transactions for audit for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Proposals were due back on April 22nd, and they, they included a question-and-answer period, and that question-and-answer period generated 42 questions from various potential bidders, in addition to several phone calls that city staff received, wanting to get more information on the comprehensive audit and what the purpose of it was. Ultimately, four proposals were received, including pricing for up to a five-year contract with the alternate first-year proposal. On three of those proposals, not the fourth one, the fourth one had an estimate of $1.9 million, but it, it, they intentionally, they gave us the information, but stated that they were not proposing on the alternate because of the volume of work it would be. They estimate it would take them approximately 32,000 audit hours to complete. To give you an idea of what sort of transactions would have to be audited if they were to do a comprehensive audit of all transactions, city staff processes approximately 120,000 cash receipts and journal entry transactions annually. Roughly 108,000 of those transactions are payments for water and sewer services for the city's water enterprise. In addition, there are approximately 17,000 cash disbursement transactions, accounts payable, invoices that are processed. This does not include payroll transactions. And one of the questions that I received were, and it was by phone, was, how many payroll checks do you, right? Well, that's included in the 17,000, but what they told me is that even if it's just those paychecks, they have to audit every present action form that goes through, every change that goes through for deductions, for premiums, for anything like that, and those transactions are not included in these numbers. Proposal estimates for the comprehensive audit ranged from 250,000 to just under 2 million. All proposers have offered to meet with city staff to determine other approaches to address any areas of concern that the council may have. So some of the options that the proposers offered, in addition to many of the firms that called to inquire but didn't end up submitting a proposal, was, would the city be interested in having an agreed-upon procedures completed? Are there certain areas that are of concern for the council that, that council would like them to focus on? Because if that's the case, they can use agreed-upon procedures, they can use artificial intelligence, so computer-aided technology that can assist with looking at transactions. Computer-aided technology will look at transactions, but it's not a human looking at everything, and so it's less costly. After looking at all the proposals and what the four firms had to offer, staff recommends a word of bid to Van Lant and Fan Canell or Vila for the standard audit services. Staff does request direction from council on any additional audit services, whether it be a comprehensive audit of all transactions, or another option such as a computer-aided audit, or agreed-upon procedures, or any other variation of that. The city does not have an agreement in place for audit services. As I stated earlier, the, the agreement that we had with the Poon Group expired at the end of last fiscal year, or when they completed the audit for the last fiscal year. So delaying a decision on the standard audit, the annual audit, would ultimately delay the annual report for fiscal year 2020, 2021. If council opts to have auditors conduct a comprehensive audit or some other form of audit services, staff can bring forward a separate contract for those additional audit services at a later time, once it's determined what exactly council is looking for out of that audit. With that, I'm available for any questions?
Okay, I have some comments. I think that, this is my opinion on this, that we can go with the staff recommendation for our regular comprehensive audit. I like the idea of using the same one for the comprehensive audit. I think that maybe, like if we approve tonight the annual audit, maybe we could have an ad hoc committee that can go over the different options, that, the one slide that said that these companies are willing to sit down and go over, you know, the different options, and then we can nail down something a little bit more specific. I mean, the computer-generated looking.
You're the only participant in this conference. Press any key to continue this conference.
Press any key. So I think something like that sounds good, because then, you know, it would help keep the cost down, and obviously, we can't sit here tonight and decide all the little nitty-gritty things. But if an ad hoc committee was formed, we could sit down with whomever we decide, and then come up with a plan and proposal for council. That's my. That's my idea.
I would agree with that.
Can I ask what the reason was by choosing VLF, why you chose that group?
Ultimately, it was, it came down to pricing. So when I looked at the pricing, even though they were two thousand, the standard audit services, they were
You're the only participant in this conference. Press any key to continue this conference.
Their pricing was about two thousand, well, just under two thousand dollars higher than the, than the other bidder. But Dowie and Associates, our biggest concern with them, even though they offered a lower price, is that they sent in their proposal the list of what they expect city staff to prepare, and they expect city staff to take on a lot of what we normally pay our auditors to take care of. And so when I take that into account and how much more work our staff would have to do to be able to accommodate that, it's not cost-effective, and therefore, VLF is the most cost-effective.
Be wild.
You're the only participant in this conference. Press any key to continue this conference.
What do you guys think?
I would agree, I would agree with you, and I would agree with Harley, that we approved the contract with the VLP tonight, VLF. Something implying. We actually want to include in a comprehensive audit.
And use the same firm?
I think, I mean, they would
Have a twin layout.
And say if they're willing to do what we want. I would set this point
I did talk to him as well. One of the partners called me as well, and they also are willing to do it, but they said the same thing in their proposal, that they would need to meet with city staff or council to understand better what it is you want to focus them on, and then they can determine what is the best approach for it.
All right, who wants to be on the ad hoc? Linda and I can do it. Oh, dear, we're all. I will make a motion to approve VLF as the auditing firm for every year there, 2021?
That would be the first audit year, so it would be a three-year agreement with two one-year options to extend.
Somewhere in here, there's your recommendation, but I can't find it. But yes, most staff recommendation.
So I can't.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Want to do a roll call vote?
Motion by Councilmember Groupa, second. Second by Councilmember Lilian Paul, Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Groupa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lilian Paul.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mails.
Yes.
Mayor Meyer.
Yes.
That motion passes. Your approved staff recommendation to approve the resolution awarding the contract center audit for services with VLF for a three-year term.
Okay, and then for staff direction on the staff, I'll make a motion to give staff the direction on the comprehensive audit services to formally engage with VLF and establish an ad hoc committee to determine the details, and then bring that back to council in a new proposal. There you go, you have a motion.
I'll second that.
Second by Russ. Can we have a roll call vote?
Motion by Mayor Meyer, second by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Groupa?
Yes.
Councilmember Lilian Paul?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Mails?
Yes.
Yes.
That motion passes to formally engage with VLF to provide staff recommend a direction to review comprehensive audit services.
And our ad hoc committee will be? Linda and I, is that good, Linda, is that fine?
Yeah.
Yes. Indeed. Okay. Excellent. Sixteen B, city manager. Thank you, Lorena.
Thank you very much, Lorena. Mayor, just a brief update on this one. The county did move a vaccine location to the mall, but they're currently working on getting all the permitting required, so it isn't open just yet. Beyond that, numbers continue to trend in a downward trajectory, which is great for the City of Hemet and for the region. So, thank you, Mayor.
Excellent. All right, it is almost ten o'clock. We'll make a deal if you guys want to have two-minute council staff reports, I mean, council member reports, and we can continue. Make a motion to go past ten quickly.
So move.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, we'll go past ten o'clock. We'll pass. All right, Councilmember Brown.
Okay, well, last Wednesday, I had the honor of representing council at the EMWD Board meeting to present the proclamation from our city council to retiring Director Paul Jones. It was very well attended. Our Chuck Washington, our District Three supervisor, was there, and a number of other representatives from the western region community. So very nicely done, and he's going to be missed. League of California Cities had their Zoom Riverside Division meeting yesterday. There was Mayor Proton Mails and Councilmember Groupa, and I were on the Zoom along with the city manager. I think, I don't know if Malcolm, I didn't see you on there, but.
I can't see you off.
Okay. Anyhow, there were, there were a number of things covered. There was a presentation by the Deputy Director of White House Intergovernmental Affairs discussing the American Jobs Act relating to infrastructure and American Rescue Plan. And then Brittany Kohler, who is National League of Cities Legislative Director of Transportation and Infrastructure, also made a presentation. Couple things of note, the cities were urged to send an opposition, opposition letter opposing SB nine, which is basically another attempt to usurp local control over housing decisions. So I don't know if we can ask at this point for staff to do that. Can we do that by consensus? I think we should certainly
Create a study of SB nine, yeah.
Opposing that one. There was also AB two fifteen, a strong recommendation to oppose that, because that would require cities to amend laws about attaining housing and community development. And if housing production is deemed to be substantially below the regional average, it would allow the state attorney general to enforce violations of Housing Crisis Act of 2019. So again, it's another takeaway of local control, allowing the state and even the state attorney general to oppose. What I'm looking for. Anyhow, they can take action legally against the city on that. So there was strong recommendation to oppose that, and also AB nine eighty-nine, a strong recommendation to oppose that, which would create a new DHC appeals committee that could actually overturn local decisions on housing. So I would suggest that we look at those ordinances and maybe get some assistance from staff or city attorney as necessary, and send letters of opposition to that. Watermaster Agenda Review Meeting is pending, have a meeting scheduled for next week. Tomorrow is a special WCE Board and TAC meeting, so hopefully, city manager and I will both be participating in that to get updates and.
The library is open. That is good news for a lot of people. It opened last Wednesday, I believe, and it is open Wednesday through Saturday from nine AM to one PM. There's, it's not, it's open for browsing, it is not open for going in and sitting down and reading anything. So that's, that's good. Get back in there. As Russ said, League was last night, the annual legislative days are going to be on Zoom this year, and there's several meetings scheduled for tomorrow, Thursday, and next Monday with representatives from Riverside County. RCTC is tomorrow, T now, the local chapter of Riverside Transit Agency is also tomorrow at one PM. And just want a reminder out there that your income taxes are due on May seventeenth, so if you don't have them done or ready to go, you better file your extension. That's it. Councilmember Lilian Paul?
There's this bill, you guys know about AB one three seven two? It says it would require every city, you know, and the county to provide a homeless person with temporary shelter, mental health treatment, resources for job placement and job training until the person obtains permanent housing, if the person were able to show that they were unable to obtain temporary placement in a shelter after showing up for three consecutive days. I thought that was interesting to talk about, because that's one of the things that WRCOG brought up. So also, WRCOG is hiring for a transportation staff analysis, if anyone's interested, but the application closes May twentieth. And then that's all I have to read for.
Excellent. Mayor Proton Mails?
Hey, the skate park, I still haven't heard anything back on the grant that we submitted. We probably will hear something sometime around summer. The Planning Commission, General Plan Amendment, GPA fifteen dash zero zero two, Page Ranch, PCD Specific Plan Amendment, SPA, Tentative Track Number three six eight four one, MAP Number fifteen zero zero eight, and subsequent environmental impact report. Proposed project consists of, one, number one, an amendment to the Page Ranch PD Specific Plan to eliminate the alignment of New Warren Road, the merging of planning, of planning Area Six with Planning Area Ten to creation of Planning Area Eight, or actually Thirteen as a commercial site, and the extension of Mustang Way from Warren Road to Stetson Avenue. An amendment to the city's general plans, plan circulation element to extend Mustang Way as described above, and to change the classification of Warren Road from a six-lane arterial to a four-lane secondary arterial, and to amend the land use designation of sixteen, nineteen point sixty-nine acres from the low-density residential LDR to regional commercial RC. They try to come back and, and try to put through for a four-lane road again, and the Planning Commission voted to move the agenda, agenda to June one, with the representative from Page Ranch to have traffic studies prepared. So that's coming down the line. I might not be here, so you guys handle that. Committee Action Program, a lot is going on with the Committee Action Program, a lot of grants are coming down the line. I had a sheet here with the CAT CARES Program for low-income housing businesses, and I put a stack out there, and I had about twenty copies made, and this is the last one. I don't have anybody here in the audience, but I will make more for the, anyone that needs them, and it's pretty good information here if you're looking for a grant for your business or home. League of Cities, again, Russ and Linda and myself were both on this Zoom meeting. And in 2020, many measures stalled due to consolidated legislative, legislative calendar, and as a result of legislative year, legislators, legislators are eager to pass thousands of pandemic-related and non-pandemic-related bills. In total, two thousand five hundred and seventy-two bills were introduced, introduced before the bill introduction deadline of February nineteenth, and in CalCities monitored over eighteen hundred and eighty-five of those bills, SB nine being one of them, which they oppose, and it has to do with approvals of duplexes, lot splits, and one bill, and this is what they're opposing. So I'm not going to read off eighteen hundred and eighty-five of them, but that one was most important. The, okay, I just told you about the, let's see, American Rescue Plan overview in March, in March, President Biden signed HR one three one nine, the American Rescue Plan Act, which provides one point nine trillion in physical relief for individuals, families, small businesses, and state and local governments facing challenges caused by COVID-19. Included in the legislation is three hundred and sixty billion dollars for state and local government, with an anticipated eight billion coming to California cities. That's all I have.
Excellent. I'm going to give all my minutes to you guys.
You like
I'm all. Sorry, no, yes, okay. Okay, ad hoc committee reports. Let's just do the ones we need to do. Vision and Mission Ad hoc Committee, we have something on here. When we put together our mission and vision priority sessions, we had envisioned and kind of lost sight of the fact that we wanted to include the public somehow in this, and so, I know this is going to kill you guys, but I want you to look at your calendars, and I want to do some sort of a, and maybe you can work with staff on this, some sort of a town hall where we just let people come and talk about the priorities, so that when the budget's presented to us, it can include the people's priorities. I mean, I think we represented them, but maybe we can have some sort of a, like, these are our bullet points, and just to engage the community in our priorities that we picked. So this is, I know that you are busy, Linda, so I would like to do this before the next council meeting. So look, and just look at your calendars, and maybe Brenda can work on it, because I just don't want to get staff, if we get staff too delayed with the budget, then we're going to drag them down too. And hopefully, Chris, this doesn't create a problem for the things that you have planned. But I think that that's real important, and Malcolm and I were talking about it, and maybe this would be the best way just to get it on the table. Daytime, daytime, evening, Fridays? Probably evenings, evenings, so you guys, I'll have Brenda email you guys, and then we can try to pick it. And then we were thinking maybe upstairs at the library on the shaded side? Yeah, there's a lot of room there. Okay. All right, that was our vision and mission ad hoc. If there's anything else, banking RFP, we approved going with Wells Fargo tonight, which is the first change in eighteen years. Oh, twenty-three years. And I just want to thank Lorena and Tiffany, and I'm banking on the other lady's name. Elena? No. Yes, she sends us the information every month. They did an outstanding job, and Malcolm and I are going to be meeting Thursday morning, I believe it is, with, to be introduced to the full staff of Wells Fargo. But the determining factor for
But the determining factor for both of us on that was basically the community involvement and the community buy-in, where we've been with Citibank for a long time, and their services have been, been excellent. At this point, they've closed their banks in Hemet, and while they may open them again, they didn't mention anything about community involvement, whereas Wells Fargo has, or they, I know they've been here for as long as I've lived here, and I came back in the seventies, or came here in the seventies before all you were born. And, you know, they were here then, and their, their personnel is local, and they have programs that go out in, in the community. So, that was the biggest thing, that the services were very, very close in what they do and the cost for them and all of that. But it was, the determining factor was buy-in in the community and commitment to stay in the community. So, we can take that one off the list.
Yes. Number two, take that off. Excellent. City Manager Lopez.
Yes, I do, Mayor. And I think your recommendation along with Councilmember Krupa is very timely, given this update that I'll provide here. So, I'll try and blaze through this item. So, just by way of background, on January 29th, the mayor and the council held a special meeting to discuss priorities for the city. It was the first of two meetings that the council held. The second meeting was held on February 26th, which was a follow-up to the first discussion held by the mayor and the council. Since that time, the city manager's office has taken the lead in planning for the fiscal year 2122 budget, which will be a program-based budget that I'll get into shortly. So, based on the input that the council provided collectively across the board, what we've done is we've taken, we've taken the items that were listed within the document, and we've centralized them around what we think are common goals that are central to all of the items that the council discussed. This is the draft, obviously. The council will get a formalized version of this in the near term. Of those items, they include quality of life, they include economic opportunity, they include partnering, collaboration, community engagement, and finally organizational effectiveness. So, when the council identified certain items within the discussions, there are certain action items that are clearly articulated that can fit within those items. There are other items that didn't necessarily articulate a specific action, and so the staff has come through and identified what those specific action items are to develop what we attribute to be the objectives and specific actions related to those items. So, based on the city goals that I just mentioned, staff is providing action plans with respect to each individual goal that will serve as the work plans for all operations in the upcoming budget. So, this is a draft snapshot of, I believe this is the organizational effectiveness item, and if you can read that, you can see that some of those items are the ones that were articulated at those priority sessions. In some areas, they weren't articulated, but we believe that they fit in well with the overarching goals that the council prioritized and discussed at those meetings. So, as a background on the budget process, this year's budget process began with a running start based on the council discussions and the direction provided in January and February. Program-based budgeting allows for budget information to be gathered around the city's programs and services. So, the budget will show the costs of a specific program and a method to evaluate the program's effectiveness and outputs through performance metrics. Organizing information in this manner, instead of at the departmental level, will provide a clearer and more transparent picture of how much money is being spent on each program delivered to our community. So, as an example, traffic enforcement was one item that came about based on the council discussions. So, in the upcoming fiscal year 2122 budget, the council will see a traffic program within the police department that has staffing allocated to do traffic enforcement throughout the community. So, you will also see the costs associated with implementing that traffic program for the police department. The same thing, I'll give you another example, community development has a code compliance operation. The code compliance program will be spelled out and clearly illustrate the item with respect to the code and code compliance program within community development. So, there are a few items of note that came up during the discussions with the council that we are looking to bring forward at a subsequent meeting to get additional feedback from the council. The first one has to do with internal service funds. At the strategic planning discussions, the council requested that we remove internal service funds from operational departments and show them differently. That creates an issue because Resolution 4731 and 4703, which are the Measure U resolutions, has a baseline 72% allocation that incorporates the internal service charges. So, one of the things that we want to avoid is the situation where if we remove internal service charges from a department, some members of the public might feel that we have reduced a departmental budget by X amount of dollars because they feel, or we've removed internal service charges. So, we want to get this on the council's radar because it is an area that we may be able to avoid in the future and not have to deal with some of the questions from the public with respect to, hey, the city is now reducing Department X's budget by X amount of dollars. Resolution 4731 and 4703, language within those resolutions state that by 2019, the ratio of officers will be established. The 2019 date came and went, and the city is not allocating the personnel as articulated in those resolutions. So, that is something that the council may want to look at and have some discussions about. Item number three, Measure U fund balance. Since about 2016, the highest percentage of Measure U expenditures compared to budgeted amounts is near the 75% mark, which has resulted in unexpendited Measure U funds, thereby increasing the Measure U fund balance. And so, the council may want to talk about the strategic plan and some of the action items conveyed within those discussions, and how the council prefers to allocate funding for those items. So, currently, there isn't any funding attached to some of those items, so the council will want to weigh in on whether they would like to use specific funding revenue streams for those items. Item number four, and I'll get to this in the next slide too, 72% of revenues allocated to public safety. So, in 2016, the city of Hemet allocated approximately 84% of its general fund revenues to public safety, but 72% of public, of expenses were for public safety. I'll, I'll show you what I mean by this in the next slide for the public so that they can understand what this means. So, again, the connection and the link is Resolution 4731 and 4703. So, on item number four that I just covered, I wanted to show what I mean by this. So, if I look at, that's a copy straight out of the fiscal year 1516 budget document. Based on the Measure U resolution, it states that no less than 72% of general fund revenues should be programmed in for public safety. So, if I look at the total amount of resources or revenues available for the city of Hemet in that fiscal year, total revenues total $35.9 million. 72% of those revenues equals $25.9 million. In the text below that, I have tallied up public safety expenses. So, what I've done is I've taken the police department, I've taken the fire department, I've taken fire prevention, and I've taken fire paramedic on the expenditure side, and I've totaled those items up. When I total those items up, I get a total public safety expenditure budget of $29.7 million. So, public safety as a proportion of revenues in that year was approximately 83%. You will also know that the deficit in fiscal year 1516 was over $5 million. So, this is clearly the issue that happens when you don't clearly have your revenues that are tied to your expenditures. And so, by not having your revenues tied to your expenditures, you're not going to have a balanced budget. And so, although public safety was approximately 73% of the total expenditures, we should be mindful that the city needed to take $5 million of fund balance to make that budget balance. So, essentially, what we have is in fiscal year 1516, the city only had just about 17% of general fund monies available for city council, city manager, city clerk, economic development, treasurer, I'm trying to read it from here, my eyes are going out, animal control, city attorney, and some of these other operations in order to make the budget work. And so, that's what I perceive a lot of the questions that we receive, typically from members of the public. So, that's really where it originated from, and it is something just to get on the council's radar. So, the next steps for us include a draft fiscal year 2122 balanced budget presentation to the council, and then two, a formal strategic plan presented to council for approval. And so, we're looking at bringing these items in the next few weeks to council to provide some commentary on. So, having the town hall that the mayor alluded to would fit in very well with the timing that we have thus far. So, Mayor, that concludes the update on the budget and the strategic plan.
Okay. If you go back to that slide that has the items, you want us to discuss those later or you need to know now?
Whatever the pleasure is of the council, Mayor.
I mean, like, the internal service funds. I hate that they're in our, our budgets. I've always hated that. At the same time, I understand what you're saying. If we, if I'm in there, then we're going to change the format of our whole document, and then everybody's going to think we're playing, playing with the money. But I guess that's something we can, what do you, what do you guys think? And I understand the problem.
Measure U was brought in in 2016, and what was its original purpose? I mean, was it for just police and firefighters, or was it?
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a really good question, but I think primarily what the voters approved was a general tax that included public safety services as well as any other general purpose for the city. The council adopted Resolutions 4731 and 4703 that narrowed the focus of Measure U primarily for public safety.
Okay, but has this worked ever since the 2018 update to Measure U? Is it, is this working for us? I don't think, it just doesn't seem like it's working. Haven't we had the same amount of police officers that we had when Measure U first came out? I know police officers quit, they go somewhere else, and we hire more, but we're still at the same amount of officers.
I think the opportunity, and I'll just say this briefly, is really about evaluating what was done initially over the last few years with Measure U and seeing whether there's any sort of other items that the council may want to discuss and prioritize with the use of Measure U. So, it's kind of a broad way of saying, we've got a good four years under our belt of Measure U, seeing what's worked. That's no fault of any one, you know, public safety department, but it's really about evaluation of the programs that have been put into place and what the opportunities are on a go-forward basis, based on what the council stated in January and February of this year. So, it's, I see it more of an opportunity to have council weigh in on some of those items. Mayor Protem?
Because I, I see public safety being more than just police and firefighters, and I see public safety as keeping our streets clean, not clean, but keeping, you know, gang members and rioting all over the wall, and, you know, just, all that brings down the city, and that brings down our safety, that, you know, people see this, and, and it just causes.
Let me interrupt you because I just broke my own rules, but we just needed to bring this back to talk about, I think this requires a much longer conversation because while it was passed as a general tax with 50% plus one, the original intent was that it was a public safety tax. And when in November, Measure E failed by about two percentage points, it was, it was approved to come back in, in the spring as a general tax. And then it passed, I think, I don't know, it was what, 57% or 58% as a general tax, but it was sold to the people as a public safety tax. So, but it does. So, maybe we can just bring, I mean, if you could email us this slideshow so that we can go over the issues, because it really just is going to take some research and the conversation that we need to have.
Okay.
Because, I mean, there's so many items. The internal service fees are even different than that, so there's a lot of them. It's not on our agenda to decide tonight, but I think this needs to just be a discussion for us to have.
Figure out what works and.
Yeah, yeah, we, we can have a whole talk about it.
Right, okay.
All right. Awesome. Okay, item number 18, future agenda items. I'll make a motion to remove number seven. Done. I don't think we even need a motion if we already made a motion to fix it, so. All right, do we have any other future agenda items to add? With that, our meeting is adjourned.